School Committee Meeting for the Public Schools of Brookline, May 12, 2022 will come to order. I am first going to read a letter from the town clerk confirming that new members have taken their oath of office. I've been Kaufman Town Clerk for the town of Brookline, duly qualified and acting as such, have custody of the record. If I certify that at the May 3, 2022, annual town election, held in accordance with MGL C 41, Section 1, Helen Esther Charlefsky, Stephen I Ehrenberg, Valerie Frius, were elected. Were elected members of the school committee for the town of Brookline for a term of three years. And that Nancy Ray Gore, did I say that correctly? Was elected member of the school committee for the town of Brookline for a term of two years. I further certify in accordance with MGL C 41, Section 15, that Helen Esther Charlefsky, Stephen I Ehrenberg, Valerie Frius, and Nancy Ray Gore were sworn to the faithful performance of their duties as a member of the school committee for the town of Brookline. Congratulations to all of you. Next on our opening agenda is that the Chair and Vice Chair are to be elected for a one-year term by a majority of those members present. And that unless a vote is taken to the contrary, no member may serve as Chair for more than two consecutive one-year terms. At this time, are there nominations for the Office of Chair? Suzanne?
Yes, I'd like to nominate David Perlman for Chair.
There's a nomination for David Perlman. Is there a second?
Second that.
Seconded by Andy Lou. Is there a vote to close nominations for Chair? Jennifer?
I'd like to close.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor closing?
We don't have to do roll calls if we're all here.
Closing nominations. Still roll call for closing?
No, we don't. I think we can just raise hands now, right?
Raise hands, okay. Ms. Coin, is there a roll call vote for the Office of Chair?
Helen? Yes. Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Valerie?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Yes.
Sounds like motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Perlman, on your new role as Chair.
Thank you.
Are there nominations for the Office of Vice Chair? David?
I would like to nominate Andy Lou for Vice Chair.
Is there a second? Mariah seconds that. Are there any other nominations? Can I, may I have a vote to close nominations? Jennifer, is there a second? Helen? All those in favor? Any opposition to closing? Ms. Coin, will you call the roll?
Helen? Yes. Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne? Yes. Valerie? Yes. Nancy? Yes. Andy?
Yes.
Jennifer? Yes. Mariah? Yes. David?
Yes.
Congratulations, Dr. Lou, on your new role as Vice Chair of the school committee. Congratulations. At this time, it's my pleasure and honor to pass the gavel over to President Perlman, or Chair Perlman.
Yeah, shall we switch seats? What does the Vice Chair say?
Vice Chair.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
This is the first time I've ever seen my name printed.
All right, it is now time for us to appoint the Executive Assistant to serve in the Office of Secretary of the School Committee. Do we have a nomination? Jennifer?
Robin. Coin.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second Suzanne? Are there any other nominations for Executive Assistants? Someone like to close? Suzanne, sir, second to close? Jennifer? All right, so we're ready for a roll call. Helen?
For the voter for the?
For the votes or?
Absolutely.
Stephen? Suzanne?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations, Robin. Glad to have you on board again. Now, before we continue to the next item, I would like for us to thank our outgoing Chair, Suzanne Fetter Spiel, who presided over two of the most challenging years in literally the last century. Given the pandemic and remote learning and all of the tumults, you led us quite well. And you had a lot of patience. You offered us a lot of support. We could not have done it without you. So thank you very much, Suzanne. I would like to welcome Andy to Vice Chair. Andy's already been sharing negotiations, which is very hard work, as you all know. Glad to have you as Vice Chair. And I also want to welcome our newest member, Nancy Ray Gore. I'm sure you're going to be fantastic for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. And for me, it's certainly an honor to be able to serve in this capacity, as I've actually attended the Brookline Schools myself. Twenty-plus years ago, when I was finishing up high school here in Brookline, I never thought that I would one day be chairing the school committee that helps manage the district. So thank you for bestowing this honor upon me.
I'm president since the first time.
They're not sure.
Well, Tom Hennessy, I think, went to the Brookline Public Schools and was also, but you guys wouldn't know. I heard at the high school, it's named after him. But I think that Hennessy's went to school.
All right, so our next item is staff recognitions, the Cavali Award winners.
I think you're running a little ahead of time, so they haven't joined yet. Is that right?
Oh, there's one here. Okay. Oh, okay.
All right, so take it away. Liz, if you'd like to introduce the Cavali.
Thank you so much. Hello, my name is Liz Askley. I'm the Executive Director of the Brookline Education Foundation. Thank you so much for inviting us here today. I have two fabulous Cavali Award winners to introduce you to, and I'll start with Nicole Chassie. Nicole has a warmth that is just what you would want from a kindergarten teacher, but she is so much more. As children's and parents, first introduction to school, she is a calm, knowledgeable presence who confidently guides each student to be their best self. She creates a classroom dynamic of kindness, curiosity, and respect that students value for years to come. Ms. Chassie is head coach of the Girls on the Run team at the Florida Rough and Ridley School, a lead teacher involved in the FRR garden, and helps teachers at other schools with their school gardens. She is a mentor to new teachers and has led teachers of many grades to incorporate the use of the garden as well as climate and sustainability into their curriculum. As a teacher in Brookline for more than seventeen years, students, families, and teachers alike can all agree that Nicole Chassie is a master teacher. The BEF is pleased to add Cavali winner to her list of accomplishments. Please welcome Nicole Chassie.
Thank you, Liz. That was such a nice introduction. Thank you. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you for inviting us here tonight to read a bridged version of my speech that I read a couple days ago. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the BEF and Dr. Guillory for surprising me with this unexpected honor a few weeks ago. And a big congratulations to Jocelyn as well for her award. I go to the BEF's Celebrating Teachers Event every year if I can and always leave feeling so rejuvenated and inspired. So to the BEF, the way you empower and acknowledge the efforts and dedication of our educators is so commendable. And a couple of thanks real quick to my principal, Ms. Buller, for the support she's given to me over the years we've worked together, to all the teachers, staff, students, and families at FRR. You're the gold standard, and without all of you being the absolute best at what you do, I would not be here today. To the FRR K-Team, Michelle, Randy, Louise, and our newest member, Zach, you are my school family, and our teamwork makes the dream work again and again into every single kindergarten, paraprofessional, and paraprofessional in general that I have ever worked with. You are the backbone of this job and of every school. Into my kindergarten family throughout the town, every K teacher, Regina, Leslie, Vicky, the amount of wisdom and experience this cohort holds is boundless, and I'm so grateful for all you've taught me. And to all the incredible teachers and extended day teachers at the Baker School, you've supported my own children in so many ways, and you are all masters at what you do. And a big thanks, of course, to my husband and our three kids, Drew, Lucy, and Frankie, for showing me the patience and understanding and grace to do this job I love so much, because a teacher's family learns to live with the fact that her job does not end when she walks out of the school building. To receive this award this year is incredibly humbling, gratifying, and surprising. Reflecting on my practice as I wrote this speech, it made me realize we now have two very distinct errors and errors in our careers, pre-COVID teaching and COVID teaching. And this is going to be the understatement of the year, but these past two years have been some of the most difficult years of my teaching career. This fall, I felt like a first-year teacher. How was I going to teach my twenty-two students who spent the core years of their development during lockdown to play, share, and coexist? Never mind read and write. Each day, I was so full of second guesses, many Plan Bs, Plan Cs, and sometimes even a Plan D when things needed to pivot. But each morning, all twenty-two shining faces crossed the threshold of KC with big smiles and a readiness to dive in. And my students this year taught me how to teach again. And to illustrate this feeling, I want to share a recent anecdote, because kindergarten's all about showing and not telling. So last week, for Teacher Appreciation Week, the Rough and Ridley family showered at our school with gifts of so much love. And first thing Monday morning, three of my free-spirited students came bounding up the stairs with giant iced coffees in their hand, so eager and proud to bestow them to me, Emily, and Terry, our prayer professionals in our class. You know where this is going. I rushed out to greet them, and when I turned the corner, one of the coffees had already splattered across the hallway. The student who was holding it, who was putting away her backpack so happily, and I said, oh, were you bringing us these coffees? And I inquired, and she said, yes, proudly, pointing to this building on the floor, and that one's yours. But this one is mine. And I just felt like I had to share this, because this story encapsulates how I felt this entire year. Every best intention and plan left spread out in a messy pile on the floor that we're forced to look at, laugh, grab a towel, move on, and make do with what we have control over and focus on the positive. I've been working in Brookline in some capacity for twenty years now, which is mind-blowing. And I have the best job in the world, because I get to live fully in the present with the five- and six-year-olds in my class. And I have had the privilege of supporting families through this major transition each year. My students keep me young, curious, and brave. I've been known to wear a puppet or two to help my students solve a problem. I have the reputation for taking up our project space in the hallway to build any number of ideas we have voted to create in KC. Leprechaun traps, enormous working cardboard doors, baking bread, baking our own bread and peeling vegetables for our annual farm party, and constructing fifteen-foot paper whale sharks, to name a few. And I have built my practice on listening to students and being active, using our hands for constructing, sewing, weaving, painting, pretending, and storytelling. You know kindergarten is working well when you hear the hum in the room and the sound of hard work and play, the important work of childhood. For those who don't know me, I'm Nicole Chassie, mom, stepmom, daughter, wife, occasional rule-breaker, lover of music, food, cooking, laughter, and bringing people together. Jumping ahead a little bit. My mom was my biggest champion to be the first person in my family to graduate from college. And it was at Northeastern that my journey in Brookline began. After meandering a bit, I decided to become a teacher, and I became the Northeastern Co-op at Pierce, where the life of a school staffer was baptism by fire, playground duty, lunch duty, substitute thing. I didn't know what I was doing then, but I learned so much. And when I graduated, I got a call from Vicky Milstein, would I be interested in working as a paraprofessional in a beep classroom at Lincoln? Little did I know that this was an angel on the other end of the phone, and accepting this job would lead me to my mentor, Michelle Greeley. I worked in Michelle's beep classroom for three years, and she taught me every valuable thing I know about teaching young children, and I never looked back. Working in beep is like receiving a masterclass in inclusion and being part of a team. Here, I learned how to make sure that every voice was heard, even if that voice is nonverbal or if that voice speaks in a language other than English. I left beep at one each afternoon and drove myself right over to the Pierce Extended Day to work with the third and fourth graders. After three years of my beep extended day rotation, I was asked to teach a small inclusive preschool class at the Lynch Center, and then to open the preschool class at the former Devotion School. I wondered how I'd fit in and help my little students feel like they were part of this bigger community. I was now about to take what Michelle had taught me and give it a go on my own. And it was then that these educators at Devotion, working just down the hall, came into my room to welcome me. Andrea Doan, Nancy Frame, Melissa Tonnichelle, Gretchen Albertini. They welcomed me with open arms and showed me the ropes of our school, and even invited me to take part in their Reggio-inspired Making Learning Visible group. Because of them, I try to welcome and support our new teachers the best I can. In 2008, I started teaching kindergarten at the former Devotion, and it was here that I met my next mentor, John Walker. John was a para in our K class for ten years. John could do all of these things that I could not. He was a master musician and a woodworker with a beautiful creative spirit. Over our ten years together, we really worked to make our learning visible to our students and families in ways I never would have been able to do alone. Long ago in KC, we had these little wooden doors in the block area, and eventually, there was only one left, and the kids were always fighting over it. After one particularly hard day, I said, well, we're just going to take this out of the block area space, and that was met with agonizing screams of no. So instead, we met as a class to figure out what we were going to do. Eventually, it was decided that we should make more doors. This led to a major search for doors in our school. We hunted and documented, how many doors are there in our school? How are they different? How can we record this information? We made design plans, and John cut out some door kits from his spare wood. We had votes on how to paint them, and before you knew it, we had five new doors to play with. Back then, we had the time and space in our kindergarten schedule to pursue this kind of learning. We had a common problem that was very meaningful to our students and turned it into a teachable moment that included lessons in democracy, mathematical thinking, writing, planning, and building. John and I, along with the other amazing paraprofessionals I've had the honor to teach with, have tried to make these kinds of experiences the pillars of kindergarten. These were the golden years of my teaching, when the expectations of our youngest students to write and complete sentences were nonexistent. And as educators, we could take them outside twice a day, give them a proper rest time, and manage the blocks of learning to include meaningful integration between arts, math, literacy, science, and social studies. I am often advocating for bringing more developmentally appropriate time, scheduling, and space back into our kindergarten day, because five- and six-year-olds need experiences along with our guidance to make connections between all we are teaching them. Teaching is not a job for the weak. We have to muster a certain amount of bravery, optimism, and positive thinking with each millisecond of the day. And in doing this, we are always modeling for our students to do the same. There are two literary characters I turn to for just about every life lesson. Their names are Frog and Toad. I'm sure many of you know them well. Forever the positive optimist, Frog accompanies his more curmudgeonly friend Toad through the day-to-day. Each year, I read the story Dragons and Giants to my class. In this story, Frog and Toad have been reading about brave people who fight dragons and giants, and they wonder if they are brave too. They climb a mountain, meet a snake, a hawk, an avalanche, and more, all the while running away screaming, I am not afraid. They run away from all these perils, and when they get back home, each hides away. Toad tells Frog, I'm glad to have a brave friend like you. And Frog replies, I'm happy to know a brave person like you. The story ends with them hiding for a long time, just feeling brave together. I start kindergarten with this story, because it opens up the space for us to talk about what it means to be brave. Can we be scared and brave at the same time? Yes. Young children are so brave, so much braver than they know, and we have all had to be so brave in these past three school years. Five- and six-year-olds hold a special magic inability to persevere that is unparalleled. Lots of us have felt like Frog and Toad in our careers, and especially these past two years. I know I have. When COVID hit in 2020, we were all thrown the curveball of our lives. Suddenly, we were supposed to know how to teach our kids through a box on a screen. All the hands-on learning went out the window. Yet, through the Zoom box, we planted seeds with our students, held lessons on processing racial injustice and the power of protest. We danced and sang together and so much more. Last year, manned with masks, gloves, and disinfectant with desks six feet apart, we still brought joy to our students. Day by day, we kept putting one foot in front of the other with huge collaborative efforts, and we made it through. We were braver and stronger together. And here we are. These past few years have been such a wild ride, and it is not over. As we say in KC every day, "Practice makes progress." Each day, we continue to put one foot in front of the other, even with the weight of our uneasy world on our shoulders. In our third school year of teaching during COVID, we are remembering how to teach. Many of us taking the time and space to give our students what they need to be successful. And although some days feel like a giant puddle of spilled iced coffee on the floor, we soak it up and keep going. And as I look at all my absolutely incredible colleagues and our support systems, I think about our students and their perseverance, and all I can say is, I am so glad to have brave friends like you. Thank you for this incredible honor and for sharing this time with me.
Thank you so much, Nicole. It is now my pleasure to introduce Jocelyn Vandola. Jocelyn Vandola is a force of nature. She has worked in Brookline for over fifteen years, teaching math in the high school's Excel program, a sub-separate program for students with various learning differences who benefit from structure and community. But her teaching goes beyond a typical math class. Ms. Vandola is able to connect math to real life for students of all abilities, ensuring their success post-graduation. She goes the extra mile with her students as well as her colleagues. During the pandemic, she organized food drives, which are ongoing for any BHS family in need. She fiercely advocates for her students in and beyond school, as well as her colleagues, who always know they have someone they can count on in Ms. Vandola. She is a mentor to many colleagues who trust her guidance and judgment, especially around supporting vulnerable students. She holds everyone she works with, students, teachers, and administrators to a She holds everyone she works with, students, teachers, and administrators to a high standard. Jocelyn Vandola is truly giving of herself and goes above and beyond in every way. The BEF is thrilled to honor her with this year's Cavali Award.
Thank you. So first, I just, I want to thank the BEF for putting this together every year. It's such an amazing way to celebrate teachers. I also want to thank the school committee for having us here tonight. I will also be reading a somewhat abbreviated version of my Cavali speech. Pediatrician, soccer player, lawyer. These were a few of my answers as a kid when asked what I wanted to be when I grew up. I might be wrong, but I don't think any child has ever answered that question with, I want to be a special education teacher in a substantially separate alternative high school program for students with emotional communication, neurological, and learning disabilities. The truth is that you don't go out and find this job. Somehow, in some way, this job finds you. I have collected years of hysterical, outrageous, and humbling stories. And I often wonder if I finally have enough material stored up to write my teaching memoir. So I figured I would take this opportunity to share with you a very rough draft of what some of those chapters might be like. My working title. I can't make this shit up. True stories from a high school special education teacher. Chapter one, thank you for always loving me even though I'm weird. The summer after I graduated college, I wasn't ready to commit to anything long term, so I started applying for random jobs. I found a science teacher position at a collaborative school in Chelmsford, Mass. My resume listed many years of working with individuals with disabilities, mostly mostly through volunteer work with the Special Olympics. It listed my psychobiology degree, chemistry minor, and pre-med qualifications. And I presented as qualified for this teaching position. I went to one interview after college and was hired. I figured I would stay for a year or two while I decided what I really wanted to do with my life. That was seventeen years ago. On the first day of school, I was twenty-one years old, teaching nineteen-year-old students who you could describe as not excited about school. On my last day there, I cried as much as I had on my first day. I received a card from an autistic ninth grade girl that read, thank you for loving me even though I'm weird. And this is what alternative teaching is all about. Loving the students who are most in need of love. Creating a school place for students to belong when they have never felt like they belonged in school before in their lives. Chapter two, we hate you, but we love you. I have seen many, many iterations of the Excel program over my tenure and I have learned a lot about what works and maybe even more about what doesn't work for struggling students. Excel has seen the best of days and the absolute worst of days. There was a span of time about eight years ago where we were consistently experiencing the worst of days. We were regularly told how much we were hated by students as they threw work on the floor, interrupted lessons, screamed in adults' faces, and told us, if you could get a real job, then you would. But you work and excel because clearly you can't. Sure, why would anyone continue to work in such a challenging place if they had other options? Usually, alternative programs are staffed with teachers who don't plan to stay very long. But Excel students deserve to have the best, most educated, and most qualified teachers out there. To push myself out of my academic comfort zone and grow professionally, I decided to pursue one of my longtime goals and get my doctorate degree. I just never knew what to get that degree in. Full disclaimer, I was recovering from shoulder surgery. And on some heavy pain meds when I made this decision, found the Urban Education Leadership and Policy Department at UMass Boston and committed myself to myself that I would apply. I have regretted it at times over the last six years, but I wouldn't change that decision for anything. And finally, this summer, I am about to defend my dissertation and graduate in December. It was during some of these particularly difficult years in a conversation with two of our most challenging Excellians where this exact conversation came up. I don't remember how, but they were asking about teachers or programs or the culture. And I explained, it is really hard to work here these days. We plan lessons, we want to help you guys, we are here for whatever you need, and you just yell at us constantly. You tell us that you hate us all the time, no matter what we do. This one particular student looked a little taken aback and replied, V, yeah, we hate you, but we also love you. This was confirmation that students can be carrying so much all by themselves. And the only thing they know to do is lash out at the safe adults at school who they really just might love the most. Chapter three, I wanted to stop falling, so I had to get better at skating. One of my most favorite parts of the Excel program are our community outings. Every year, we take students ice skating, bowling, play laser tag, jump on trampolines, roller skating, and many more. Every year, we have students who have never done these activities before and are trying them out for the first time. I have to be honest, sometimes these trips feel like a disaster. They are always exhausting, but most of the time, they are the best events of the entire year. Occasionally, we find an opportunity to enlighten our most challenging students by taking them out into nature and enjoying their fearful expressions when we tell them that there were sharp sightings in the Charles River, so be extra careful as we are climbing into our kayaks. We laugh as they are screaming at the top of their lungs when their boat gets a little too close to a swan. And they don't seem so tough when they are paralyzed with fear paddling by a very tiny baby beaver. If you ask them about hiking in Blue Hills, you might get a long story about how we got lost going down the wrong trail. And some may even tell you that we almost had to call for a rescue. As a twelve-year veteran with Boston Roller Derby, my favorite outing is our annual roller skating trip. We had a student for about two and a half years who was incredibly quiet, who had trouble getting to school in the morning, and I would sometimes go over to her house to meet her to walk to school. She was the first student who was ever very interested roller skating. She had never been before. And she skated the entire two hours, mostly on her own, falling down, getting back up, resting for a minute on the wall, and then would keep going. The next day, I asked her how she was. She was bruised and sore, but had absolutely loved it. When I mentioned that she had gotten a lot better over the course of the trip, her response was, well, I wanted to stop falling, so I had to get better at skating. She never once said, I'm bad at this, became frustrated, or took her skates off. She was determined to stop falling and improving was the only option. So she focused on getting better one stride at a time. And every time she fell, she got back up. This parallels the true experiences of becoming a roller derby player. If you want to stop falling, stop getting cut, stop getting beat by your opponents, you have to put in the work. Quitting is not an option. It is a humbling learning experience that I recommend often to students. Find something that you are really, really bad at, but you enjoy. And put your time in to become good at it. When you start, don't let any bumps or bruises get you off track to your goal. Find a team to work with and push each other to improve. Chapter four, Ms. V, I don't have any toilet paper. In January two thousand twenty, BHS social worker Karen Kennedy and I were discussing the latest pandemic updates. We knew it was only a matter of time before Brookline schools closed. And even if they didn't, we knew that Excel students would get sick. Already vulnerable families would lose wages to illness. And there would be massive struggles for anyone who heavily depended on school meals. We started buying food and collecting donations from BHS staff. On Thursday, March twelfth, we found out school would be closed for two weeks. The next morning, an elite team met at BHS to organize and deliver food in the best way we knew how. Packing the school van full of boxes and bags, I drove to the locations of nineteen Excel families while Karen and others surfed in the back simultaneously, holding on and preventing food from flying everywhere. Families came up to the van, collected food, and asked what was going to happen. All we could do was admit we didn't know and assure them we would be back with more food. Call me, text me, I'm here, we are all here. Just a few weeks later, I received a text I never thought I would. Ms. V, I don't have any toilet paper. We all knew, we all knew there was a shortage from hoarding. And all I could think of was that I will be damned if my students don't have toilet paper because other people are stocking their basement shelves with a year's supply. Luckily, something had told me the last time I was in BHS that I should just take the toilet paper out of one of the staff bathrooms, you know, just in case. So I replied, I will be right there. And Robin Hooded my way from TP Bandit to TP Delivery Driver. Because of the generosity of school staff, Brookline families, a critical partnership with Ken Kushner and the Brookline Food Pantry, and the incredible custodians Jimmy Mallett and Clayton Perkins, the food drives have successfully delivered food to as many as forty-eight families at a time for over two years. For Thanksgiving two thousand twenty, every single one of the forty-eight families received two turkeys and all the fixings plus hundreds of dollars of other items. If you have not had the pleasure of witnessing this magic, please come by this Saturday, May fourteenth, for our next drive-through food drive. I could not have done these without the help of some of the most amazing colleagues. Jennifer Gerusi, Amy Byer, Paula Shay, and Marta Fuertes come to every single drive. From this massive project, awareness about food insecurity in Brookline has increased. And we are coming up with ongoing ways to provide support for families. Chapter five, keep being the wonderful, caring, thoughtful teachers that you are. There are certain students that teachers will absolutely never forget. In this one particular case, it is an entire family, two of which have come through Excel. The oldest sister made a school-wide impact with a letter she wrote to staff when there were general tensions between students and staff at BHS. In her, in response to a stressful event, she wrote a letter, posted it on the walls, and photocopied it to hand out to every teacher she could find with the words, keep being the wonderful, caring, thoughtful teachers that you are. But sadly, on May thirtieth, two thousand twenty, I woke up to a text from this same student that read, Ms. V, my mom died last night. This was exactly one week before her graduation. She had already experienced every adversity that anyone could think of and was graduating against all odds stacked against her. I am sure that there were people who were understandably worried that she wouldn't make it through high school at all, let alone at BHS. She had finally proven all the doubters, including the occasional doubts in her own head, wrong by making it to graduation, when a tragic fall had left the family devastated. I have been struck with immense gratitude time and again the last two years, but the aftermath of this tragedy is the most unforgettable. Kyle Bowlier Jones was coming to help, um, help me pack up their current apartment. But there was no way two people could do this alone. I had to call for backup. The backup I knew I could count on in the biggest pinch. My roller derby team showed up with all the muscle ready to go. Several weeks later, they needed help moving again and BHS staff, Jennifer Gerusi, Lindsay Davis, Liz Brennan, Marta Fuertes, Clifton Jones, Jacob Page, and Kevin Whitehead were all there. They showed up for the whole day to load and unload a moving truck to go from one part of Egmont to another. And we helped a family going through tragedy get a little bit of rest and peace because we were there for them. Chapter six, we are just one big dysfunctional family. There are things that we help students with that might be even more surprising than the stories I have already told, like court appointments and road tests. We do it all because at the end of the day, no matter the disagreements or how upset students can get at us, one of our seniors many years ago was absolutely right in her graduation speech. We are just one big dysfunctional family. Like any dysfunctional family, we have a huge Thanksgiving celebration, which we begin preparing for weeks in advance. We grocery shop at BJ's with the students and we drive around picking them all up so that we can all get to school by five AM and get the turkeys in the oven. Like any dysfunctional family, there are arguments between tired, cranky teens over who gets to make which dish. Someone always forgets to remove the plastic bag with the giblets. Completely exhausted, running on a pot of coffee each. At the end of the day, we feed the whole BHS staff before we sit down together to feast. We will then spend the next year reminiscing about how awesome it was because the arguments are forgotten, nobody got food poisoning, and we accomplished a seemingly impossible feat. We have the most random group of students, but they all have certain commonalities. Most have already faced adversity that we could never even fathom. School does not come easy for them, and at some point in their lives, they probably felt like they didn't belong. If they allow it, our big dysfunctional family is where everyone belongs and they can all find a home. It wouldn't be this way without the most incredible staff team. Our extraordinary paras, Alex Hyman, Genzel Scarlett, Serena Smith, and Dave Silver. Our long-term sub, coming in clutch, Schiller Denny. Our incredibly empathetic counselor, Jacob Page. Seventh-year English teacher, Sarah Cornell, who's the only reason I got my speech under twenty minutes. Seventh-year science teacher, uh, who brings science to life with fun projects, Amanda Lehman. And the coolest and calmest of us all, history teacher for eleven years, Kyle Bowlier Jones. You rarely find programs like this with this level of returning staff. And there is no other group of humans that I would rather be in these trenches with. Excel students are constantly faced with uphill battles. Challenges at home, mental health, substance use, academically, socially, you name it, and we have been in that struggle with our students. They're always looking to prove people wrong. It might be sometimes parents or friends, enemies, even some former teachers. And I think it would be impossible to find a staff as committed as this one outside of Brookline. They make even the hardest days bearable and the best days a thousand times better. I would not be speaking about this today without this group. Etholog, nobody can teach in a program like this forever. About three years into my Excel tenure, Brookline hired a consultant to review the Excel program. She interviewed all of us multiple times, observed classes, and spoke with students. At the end of my final conversation with her, she said, okay, last question, and this is completely off the record. Nobody can keep teaching in a program like this their whole career. What do you plan to do next? I still don't have a definite answer to this question, but maybe this dysfunctional Excel family will just have to prove her wrong too. Because at this point, we have all gotten pretty darn good at skating. Thank you.
Thank you very much for these presentations. Very inspirational to hear about how you got your start and how you provide these all-encompassing experiences for your students. So thank you very much for what you do and for telling us all about it.
If I could for just a moment, and I'll speak to them, but you guys didn't listen. I had the pleasure together with Suzanne to visit Nicole Chassie's classroom. Unfortunately, I haven't been to yours, Jocelyn. I hope to go someday. And it was, Nicole's class was amazing, absolutely amazing. I sort of held it up as what I see as the best of Brookline in terms of pre-kindergarten. And, and what, what goes on in the learning that happens there. It was, I think Suzanne can, can second that.
I absolutely can.
And the other piece, just to add to what Liz said about Nicole, she also volunteered somewhat. I twisted her arm a bit and was on the superintendent's search committee in addition to all the other things that she does. And was a very valuable member on that. So thank you, Nicole, for all you do. And thank you, Jocelyn, for your wonderful, wonderful book. I'm waiting to read it. I think you could make it a good bestseller.
Yeah, if I could, if I could just follow up a little bit of that. I think what I noticed, as I said, I've been to Nicole's and I was, classroom, I was blown away. And I haven't to Jocelyn's, but what I heard from both of you is that you just have a strong North Star. You know what it means to educate. And even when crazy fads come through and people say, ah, you can't do that anymore, you have to do this. You know what's important and you stick with it. And I know that's true with Nicole. She got a plug in for play in kindergarten, how important that is. And I absolutely agree with that. And, and Jocelyn, you're doing the same thing. You're getting your play in with your students. Whether it's, you know, roller skating or Blue Hills, or you're getting experiences and you're getting out in the world. And so I thank you both for doing that and sticking to what you know is good for children or what works for them. Thank you very much.
Ken for going above Ken for going above and beyond in all ways for both of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for saying that.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right, so you are free to stay with us if you would like, but if you want to call it an evening, we understand. Next. Thank you. Next up, we have administrative business, the consent agenda. So we're going to be taking three separate votes here. The first one will be the past record, Brookline High School Project Hill International Contract Amendment ten, the Brookline High School Project Skanska Change Order twenty-three, the Driscoll Project Gilbani Change Order eleven. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
I'm moving.
Thank you, Helen. Sorry, second.
Let's go, babe.
Okay, Mariah, second. All right, Helen, your vote?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
All right, passes. Next up, we have vote to approve contract with Consigly Construction Company in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred dollars for the Pierce Project pre-construction services. Would someone like to move that? Helen, sir, a second. Suzanne, any discussion or questions regarding this item? No? Okay, so we can go ahead and vote. Helen?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Well, Jennifer?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
All right.
Can I ask a question, David? When do we vote, just raising our hands, and when do we do roll call?
So traditionally, I think we always did a roll call anyway, even though we could just raise our hands if we wanted to, right?
I think that's right.
Yes.
Okay, because we did one vote earlier that was raising hands. I wasn't sure what the rule was.
I think usually if it's a non-substantive vote, we tend to just raise hands, and otherwise we do the roll call.
Okay.
But as a technical matter, I think other than electing the chair and vice chair, and if somebody is joining us by phone, uh, raising their hands, suspicion.
Thank you.
All right, so the next vote is possible vote to not participate in the school choice program for the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year. For those who may not be familiar, I'm going to read a bit about what that pertains to. The school choice law contained in the Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three presumes that each school committee will admit non-resident students under the school choice program unless there is a vote to the contrary taken by June first of each year following a hearing on the issue. The school committee combined the hearing for this issue with a public hearing on the FY twenty-three budget held on February third, twenty twenty-two. Brookline has not participated in school choice in the past and has cited the following reasons. The school choice reimbursement rate is substantially lower than the cost of educating one of the district students, and the district has no excess capacity in its buildings. So would someone like to move the vote to not participate in school choice? Thank you, Helen. Sir, a second? Jennifer, any discussion? No? Okay, I'll go to the votes. Helen?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
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 All right. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report Spotlight on Excellence. Dr. Gillery?
Thank you so much. Good evening, again, community. Our superintendent's report for this evening. Uh, we're going to give an update on COVID-nineteen, uh, check in on our school visits, share with you or talk about the school enrollment survey, acknowledge our educator appreciation week as well as Nurses Day, acknowledge Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, community engagement, as well as our, and we will close with our spotlight on excellence. So as you can see, um, our, um, COVID-nineteen dashboard, uh, where we are, where we started taking measurements from, uh, in January, uh, to where we are presently, uh, you could see, um, the blue line, the positive cases by week, uh, and then cases while at school contagious. We were nearly three hundred in the January timeframe. Um, and then, as you can see, in, on March seventeenth, we were about seventeen cases. And you can see, week by week, uh, the number of cases that have been reported to DESI with our two, uh, most recent, uh, case counts up around hundred sixty-two, um, in that regard. And so we know that sometimes our dashboard, there's a number that goes into DESI and then, then there's a, uh, our district dashboard that goes up the next day. So sometimes the numbers are a little bit out of sequence. But you can see, uh, that our, our cases are, um, up, uh, more so than we'd like to see. And certainly you can see where we moved to the mask-friendly environment, uh, on March fourteenth. And we've had, uh, breaks in here as well as returning from spring break and those types of things. Our next slide, we updated our, uh, health protocols that were sent out, uh, last night. We moved to, uh, masks are now strongly encouraged for all individuals, uh, during indoor settings. Um, I didn't get a chance to get out to many schools, uh, today, but I did get to the high school and saw and was, uh, received reports that there was a slight increase in folks wearing masks, uh, but not a, uh, a substantial change there. Uh, but people are, uh, taking notice, uh, uh, and responding to that, uh, to this, uh, change order. Tricia Laham is staying in contact with the Health, both Health Department as well as members of panel four. Um, and there are discussions, uh, amongst some of those members about returning to a mask mandate. But, uh, our Health Department was staying very closely again with our Health Department. Um, I believe on the eighteenth, there's a meeting and they may be taking up a discussion or will be discussing certainly the numbers and those types of things. And so right now, um, Tricia is staying very closely involved with that. I was on a call with the commissioner last week, uh, and the DESI medical advisors are, were saying that they were, uh, expecting, uh, a dip, uh, in numbers, but we haven't experienced that in, in our organization as yet. And you can see on the fir-, on the April first, we shifted to, uh, a statement where masks are required for individuals returning from isolation, um, fully vaccinated individuals who had a close contact at home as well as individuals who are symptomatic. And so again, the confluence mask off, uh, allergies, colds, all those types of things are certainly making their way around the system. But, uh, we are now at a point where we are again saying masks are strongly encouraged, uh, for everyone. The superintendent's visits, um, again, a spending lots and lots of times in schools. I enjoy, enjoy certainly this aspect of it. I will tell you, um, I won't go through all of these visits. We'll see some other pieces a little bit later, but I had the most amazing experience at Beech Letch, uh, on the sixth. Uh, Regina and Margaret and I were walking around and we walk into, um, one of the classrooms and the little girl says, you're back. I haven't seen you in a little while. So, because of course with Bee, it's making your way around to all the different locations. And so when I have a deep visit schedule, Regina and I pick the particular location. So, uh, she says, I'm four years old now. I've been looking for you. That was, that was a great experience. Makes you feel good that you're at least having some impact with the students. We have our final visits, our rotations coming up, uh, in June for the last rotation. Friday, May sixth, the Office of Strategy and Performance, uh, sent out an enrollment survey to all PSB families requesting more information about their enrollment status for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. And so this gives us an idea again to help us, uh, with our planning purposes. Those that have intentions to return and, uh, families indicating, uh, they're, that they're transitioning out of our community as such, and so that helps us, uh, in those regards. And so, uh, surveys are starting to come in, and at this point since we launched, I think we have about twenty-four, uh, families that indicated that they're transitioning out, uh, of the community. And certainly our enrollment, uh, is continuing to also happen. So, uh, it's the in and out. For our staff appreciation, here are some images, uh, that were taken around, uh, or shared out with us. And so parents and guardians across the district took time to show their appreciation for educators last week during educator appreciation. And so, uh, we have a number of days that happen sort of back-to-back. Teacher appreciation, principal appreciation, nurses appreciation. So, um, we try to, again, acknowledge as many as we can, and we don't want to offend anyone by leaving them out. So we try to do as much of a group, uh, call there. But certainly we want to thank our educators again for their hard and dedicated work. Uh, we know that folks are working hard and we really appreciate that and we can see that as we make our way around the system. And certainly our nurses, our support staff, our administrators, our custodial food services, uh, all of our employees are doing a fantastic job and working hard. So we want to celebrate them, um, as we make our way through the system. For Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, I had the opportunity to listen in, uh, to the BaFen event. Was it yesterday? Yesterday. Um, and great, uh, great stories, uh, experiences from our students. Uh, and I'm going to reach out to them because, uh, to Chi Chi, uh, or Olivia Tab, because I want to watch their video again, what does it mean to be an Asian American at BHS? That was an amazing documentary that both students and staff contributed to. Uh, and so listening to the students' stories as well as their essays and congratulations to all of the award winners, uh, as well as for their participation and contributions, and certainly to the, uh, uh, community members that helped facilitate and organize that each year. For our community engagement, there have been a number of activities that have occurred. And I had an opportunity to participate in a number of things, certainly thanking the Innovation Fund, uh, for the gala. I had an opportunity to go and visit Runkel at their, uh, science night. And then that, uh, Saturday was the Bulldog Trotathon at Baker. What's missing here? And I apologize to Driscoll. Driscoll also had its, um, science fair, uh, as well. So we want to acknowledge that, but hopefully get some images up for them, uh, next time. And then the, uh, Walk, uh, Bike or Bus and Roll to School Day. We also had the opportunity to attend the Brookline Teen Center, uh, fundraising event or their gala. Donna, this was a school visit scheduled for Runkel. I had the opportunity to go and watch the trout being released, uh, in Jamaica Pond. And so I, you know, when I walk around on the weekends, certainly see the fish in there. I was like, who keeps this thing stocked? Now we, we are, uh, PSB is contributing to the stocking of Jake. With lots and lots of trout. And so again, this was a pilot program that was done this year, I think, at, uh, at Baker and Runkel. So students, uh, uh, nursed the fish all along and then had their release day. So that was a great opportunity to be out there. We certainly just heard from Ms. Van Dole as well as Ms. Chastey. So again, thank them, uh, for their hard work and dedication. And then today was the BHS Day of Racial Reform and Solidarity. I caught the very tail end of the day over there and, um, students were sharing a remarking with student, with faculty, how much this day has helped them feel heard and be seen. Uh, and so lots of amazing work, although we know we've had challenges, but we're also looking at what are the solutions that we're also bringing to the table. And at this moment, I am happy to share our spotlight on excellence tonight, our MEKO Core Program. Over the years, MEKO staff have developed and launched many innovative programs to meet the needs of our students. This evening, we will hear about, um, CORE, Communicating Our Real Experiences. We will hear a bit about how and why CORE was developed and how it addresses students' needs and how it develops our students' leaders. I am pleased to turn the microphone over to Dr. Lozama, our MEKO Program Director, so that he can tell us more.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Gillery. And I am also joined by one of our two students who we're going to recognize this evening, Mr. William Finkley, who's here with us and will share a few words towards the end of our presentation. But I am going to do a share screen and we have PowerPoint presentation for you today. Go. Oops, did not do that. So as Dr. Gillery just mentioned, CORE stands for Communicating Our Real Experiences, and it was created by Mr. Kendall Jones, who's our, um, Brookline MEKO Coordinator for SEL and Mental Health. The program was designed to bring awareness to and address the social, emotional, mental health issues that impact the lives of our MEKO students. The goal of CORE in each of our sessions is to provide student leaders with a platform to make a positive change that will improve students' social, emotional well-being, school culture, and create a more welcoming community for all. So CORE provides, um, our, our students with the opportunity to have infinity spaces where they openly and honestly discuss the challenges they face. CORE also provides for students the opportunity to explore and discuss mental health and strategies to cope with trauma. CORE, and, and this is really facilitated by Mr. Jones, Mr. Green, um, and our student leaders, provide self-care act- activities and mindfulness training. CORE takes place during our X Block period at the high school in our Martin Luther King Room. And on average, we have forty students who attend our CORE, uh, sessions, um, each week. So I just want to highlight, just, um, take a few moments to highlight some of our CORE sessions, um, that took place this year. We've had Creating Voice for the Voiceless, Understand, Understanding the Power of Language, Mental Health and Awareness Series, which is, uh, focused on healthy relationships with peers and educators. We also had a session on embracing and respecting our LGBTQ plus community. Um, and a big part of our work is our Social Justice Leaders Workshop, which is a leadership development for students where they have an opportunity to help co-facilitate, um, the sessions that are created by, um, both students and our MEKO staff. So this year's recipients of our MEKO Social Emotional Learning Student Awards are Giada Bryant, who had a previous engagement, and she's not going to be able to join us this evening, but also Mr. William Finkley. This award recognizes two juniors whose, um, body of work and commitment to SEL has positively impacted their peers and school staff. The award is given to students who have committed to reducing anxiety and emotional distress among their peers through co-development and co-facilitation of our CORE sessions. So at this moment, um, I would like to just share, even though Gianna is not with us this evening, she did, um, put together a statement that she wanted me to share with our group. So I just want to take a few minutes to read this. So CORE has begun to teach me how to lead and be successful in an unaccommodating world for a young black woman. CORE highlights the importance of leadership development and emphasized the need for social, emotional learning. Many of our sessions, such as mental health, understanding stereotypes, microaggressions, code switching, and much more, have given me the skills to get through some challenging times and to support my friends. This program has given me great insight into the world of mental health, and I'm grateful for the opportunity. I would like to just take this time to introduce, um, Mr. William Finkley, who's one of our juniors at, um, Brookline High School. He's going to share a few words with you. I just want to, uh, take a second to just tell you how great William is. So when I am not having a so much good day, I go to the high school and I get the biggest and warmest welcome from William. His smile is, he comes over, he puts his hands on my shoulder, and he always asks, hey, Dr. Lozama, how are you doing? So, um, it's great to have student leaders like William who continue to inspire and spark us to do the great work that we do. So William, I'm gonna pass it over to you so you can share a few words.
Hi, everybody. I'm William. And I would just like to say, this year CORE has taught us a lot. And it's deeper than its advertised meaning. In CORE, we have talked about different people's perspectives and experiences in growing up in Boston and other surrounding areas like Brookline. CORE showed me that not everyone's lived experiences are the same, but we can all try and make our best situations by coming together in harmony. I want to share with you the amazing people. I want to share with you the amazing people that run this program, Mr. Green and Mr. Jones. They have gratefully impacted my development as a leader, both inside and outside this program. As a student leader, they have installed the importance of supporting my peers and checking in with friends and family on a daily basis. Because they have allowed me to grow as a leader with a focus of mindfulness and mental health. I am so grateful for them. I look forward for the work in the Core Program that we do and reminding me of my friends of importance of mental health.
Great. Thank you so much, William. So it's so important that we continue to spotlight our students. And I'm very blessed with the opportunity to spotlight Mr. Finkley and Ms. Bryant for their tremendous work in our Core Program and being amazing student leaders.
You, Dr. Lozama, and William. So tonight, we shine the spotlight on excellence. It says the Public Schools of Brookline Spotlight on Excellence is awarded to William Finkley in recognition of your dedicated leadership and skilled advocacy through the MEKO Communicating Our Real Experiences Program. And it's signed by myself as well as Chair David Pearl. So congratulations, William. I know that you, you can't be here with us tonight, but we will acknowledge you as well. The Public Schools of Brookline Spotlight on Excellence is awarded to Gianna Bryant in recognition of your dedicated leadership and skilled advocacy through MEKO Communicating Our Real Experiences Program. Again, congratulations to Gianna.
Thank you.
Just a question I have, or we still have you. Participation level in the Core Program?
So we have roughly anywhere between 30 to 40 students who participate weekly. A lot, we do it during our X Block period, so it's kind of hard grabbing students during that time. A lot of our students participate in many different clubs, but it's not only for our MEKO students. We put it out to all students at Brookline High School. So we, we, we have a good amount of kids who come, come in.
Thank you. I also want to note that Kendall Jones, who you mentioned is the creator of the Core Program, classmate of mine at the then devotion school, I'm going to get at the high school. It's nice to see that come full circle and see people continuing to serve the schools that they themselves attended. So a special thank you to Kendall. Do any of you, all right?
I just wanted to say thank you, William, for coming tonight and talking about, talking with us about your experience. And it's so great to see what you've been able to do as a student leader. So congratulations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Steven?
I just want to say to William, thanks for mentioning Mr. Green and Mr. Jones. I, I had the privilege and thanks to Dr. Lozama, spending a day at the MEKO VHS earlier this year, maybe last year. And it was just so clear that the two of them were trusted, respected, successful at creating an atmosphere where people felt comfortable being themselves. So I just want to echo what you said, William, about your, about Mr. Jones and Mr. Green. I think they're doing a really remarkable job in that, in that room.
So we, we put out the invite to anyone who would like to stop by, you know, stop by the MEKO room and join us during some of our Core Sessions. We, staff do participate in some of our Core Sessions, which is pretty awesome as well. So feel free at any time to come by.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay if you like. If not, we're going to continue. But thank you again for joining us today.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have public comments. And depending on the number of speakers we have, it'll either be two minutes or three minutes. All right. Looks like we don't have anyone signed up for public comment. So we'll move on then to presentations and discussions of current issues. Update on Steps to Success, the Executive Director Juan Conto, District Director for Steps to Success, Sophia Williams Lewis, and Senior Director of Teaching and Learning, Gabe McCormick.
Okay, before we start that, I want to ask us one more question from the previous presentation. Just a question about the COVID numbers. Could you give us any further insight on your decision-making process here? How will you, how would you make a decision about whether to reinstate a mask mandate? Would that be in consultation with?
Absolutely. So it won't be line of skill or in that regard. So it's in consultation with, with Sagal, our new Public Health Director, as well as her work with her colleagues as well. So I know that Tricia Laham is also going to be instrumental in that recommendation as well. She was on with a number of state, I think a state workshop today. And Sagal is checking with her counterparts in other communities as well. So there's a, a community wider network approach to that conversation.
Thanks very much. Sorry to touch that. Are you ready? All right. Good to see the folks I know, good to meet folks in person that I've only met on a screen and good to meet people I don't know. My name is Gabe McCormick. I'm Senior Director for Teaching and Learning for Secondary Education. And in addition to supporting curriculum instruction for middle school and high school work, I also am kind of the central office connection for our Steps to Success Program. And so I'm really excited to introduce Juan and Sophia. We're going to be presenting and providing an overview of steps, but also talking about kind of where we're at and some areas where we're doing well and some areas where we want to improve and bolster the program. So Juan Conto is the Executive Director for Steps to Success, Inc. He joined Steps in, over the summer, June or July, kind of July neighborhood. So he's heading up the nonprofit side. So they'll talk about the partnership a little bit when we have a district, nonprofit, and then the Brooklyn Housing Authority as well. And so Juan's been here and in less than a year is really done exciting work. I'm really excited about the partnership. We've had great communication. Just really open, really free flowing, which is a really essential part of making steps work at all, because it is collaborative in nature. And then Sophia Williams Lewis is our District Director of Steps to Success. So she supervises all of our district-based staff. And I was really excited that she decided to come back to Brookline to do this role. She was an advisor at the peer school for a while, left us for a minute to be a dean in Everett. And we've been able to grab her back. And it's just been a pleasure to have Sophia here. She hit the ground running. We were able to bring her in in November, which is kind of an awkward time to start in a school year. And sometimes I forget that she's only been here since November because while she's got, so without further ado, I'll have one to do.
A little bit. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Like Gabe said, my name is Mark, I'm the Executive Director of Steps to Success, Inc., nonprofit arm of Steps to Success. For those of you who may not know some of the more specifics or details about Steps, it is a partnership between the Brooklyn Housing Authority, the Public Schools of Brookline, and Steps, Inc. And what we do is we try to close the opportunity gap for low-income students and specifically those living in the housing authority by providing in-school, out-of-school, after-school programming, both academic, other enrichment opportunities. They can go from, you know, getting them into a summer camp or providing after-school home support. And we start working with students of third grade until they're in college. So pretty, pretty long time. Yeah. All right. Let's see if I can, yeah, all right. So here is just a little bit of data on our students, a quick overview. So as you can see, we have 288 students in the schools right now, the elementary and high school level. So that's from, I think this includes fourth grade and up. Yes. So I think we saw a few third graders who have not been included in this, but you can see the majority of the students are in four K to eight schools, the Ridley, Lincoln, Pearson, Lawrence. Then there's a handful at Driscoll Heath and Runkle, and then at VHS, obviously, as there's a lot in that school. And then if you look at the left chart, some demographics on our students, you know, our Step students, they're, they're three times more likely to have an individualized education plan, more likely have medical alert, much more likely to be economically disadvantaged, or reduced lunch, and that suits color. So we're working with students who, you know, can sometimes need some support to help close opportunity gaps, some access to resources that Brookline has. And that's what we're trying to do with our program. A little bit about participation data for this past fall. So our participation in after-school programs, which is when we really do our work in school and after-school, but for the K to, for the three to eighth graders, has returned back to pandemic levels, which is amazing news. During the pandemic, it was all virtual, obviously. So it was a little tough for some young people, both to feel engaged, but also to access technology to be able to participate. So went from the mid 50s in the pandemic to back to the 70 and higher. Now, an eligible participation rate has also gone up from 55 to 70%. Probably not news to you all, but the personal programming has proven to be more effective for our students. And it's, you know, returned to sense of normalcy both to our students, our staff, and us. And we launched third grade in January, traditionally been fourth grade and up, but this year went down to third grade. Seeing as there's a need for more support in the upper grades. And so far, it's been pretty good. And then just a quick overview of some actual programs that we provide. So homework support for the first hour after school on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesdays. And then the second hour and a half is enrichment programming. So that can go from some social emotional support, like a second set of curriculum, which I assume some of you might know about, substeam enrichments through college partners like Los University, Boston College, Simmons. And we, we work with the, some other independent partners right here as well to provide some programming.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sophia Williams Lewis, and I direct the Steps to Success on the PSB side. One of the things that I noticed when I first got here was the inequities between the students and the PSP that are not students of color and our students. I'm talking about closing the academic gap. This is something that's alarming to me. So in ninth through eighth, ninth to 12th grade, 44% of our students had a D or an E means that they're failing or in jeopardy of failing. 44%, quarter three is a report card, 52%. The middle school looks slightly better, not perfect. 38% of our students, six to eight, 38, excuse me, 30%. And third quarter, 32% of our students. So to me, this tells the story that our students are going to need a lot more support when they get to the high school. This here is the social emotional data from the Panorama Survey for the winter of 2022. As you can see here, sorry, this screen. One of the things that really sets out to me is the self-efficacy piece, 61, as you can see, the whole, for the district was 61%. For our students, it was roughly around 46%. That's believe that they have self-efficacy skills. And what that manifests in is what we see here with their report cards, with 44% of our students in quarter two having a D or an E, in quarter three, 52% of our students having a D or E. And if anyone's not familiar, an E is typically a failing grade. So there's, I'm going back to that slide just for one second. It was a lot of data. I just wanted to look at it again real quick. This one or?
Yeah, this one. Just if you don't mind, just to absorb it a little bit.
So true mean?
I can wait. We can go back. Yeah. Okay. Keep going. Sorry. I just.
Um, so true, where's this true? Just me a little bit of students that are involved in Steps to Success.
Just wanted to look at the grade breakout real quick.
So it's somewhat broken up amongst the grades, nine, 10, 11, 12. A little have been more heavy in nine and 11. It's a little. Do you find that, I mean, do you, do you find that it's heavier in, in other grades? Eight is very, 61% in quarter two. Then the grades seem to have gotten maybe a little bit better in the next quarters. There's some improvement there.
And I can't speak to 100% of what the teachers do as a K through eight school, but I do know from being an advisor at the peer school, once our students need support, like the principals, the guidance counselor, the teachers are more than willing to help our students get to where they need to be. And that's evident from quarter three.
Do you also want to look at the Panorama Survey information?
No, I got enough time. Second time. Thank you. Yeah.
A little bit of, you know, request for more support for Brookline High. So this year, we have, I guess you can't see the top right, but the three colors. So the alternative pathways, it's the black color, higher education is the sort of blue, blue color. And then unsure is the gray. So as you can see, the past three years, our senior class was by 18 every year. And then this year jumped up to 34. Kind of anomaly. We're expecting to go back to around the 20 range for next year, but even so, even though we have a much bigger class, fewer of our students are likely headed to college. You know, for a variety of reasons, some students don't feel ready. Some feel a little, you know, they don't feel like they're at the, how do I say it? They still don't feel old enough, like they don't feel their age. Some of them are not academically ready. And honestly, the biggest thing we hear is finance is our, our challenge. They don't want to take on many loans. College is getting more expensive. I think, I don't know how many people saw that BU raised their tuition by three point something percent. It's now 61,000 just to go to BU. So it's not attainable for a lot of our families and students. So we're trying to provide some more alternative pathways, programs to that as offerings, but it does require a lot to, to support them. Something that hopefully we can do at the school is provide some more scholarships and, yes.
Could you just say like one sentence or two about what you mean by alternative pathways?
So alternative pathway in this case is going straight to work, going to a training program, going to an apprenticeship, going to an online competency-based post-secondary program. So we have some partnerships with, there's one called Building Pathways, which is a construction pre-apprenticeship program. We have partnerships with other online-based competency programs. So those are some of the ones that we have been working with. But that encompasses a lot of those.
Are the kids advocating themselves to go to alternative pathways or are these being recommended based on their?
They are advocating. So something that we want to make sure is that they have the option to go to college. Because I think sometimes, especially our kids who are, you know, mostly kids of color, they get told, oh, you should, maybe this isn't for you. You should be going down this way. So we want to give the option to go wherever they want, if they have the ability to go there. But if they want to pursue an apprenticeship program, if they want to go into the trades, we're going to help them get there.
So the, the heading in the slide is need for more support at Brookline High. Have you not gotten to the, if you're still going to talk about that bit? Okay. Well, my question is just, you know, do you, is, well, also your earlier number said you had like 140 something students at Brookline High School. I'm assuming they're more or less equally spread across the four years.
Yeah.
So it would seem to me like you're actually going to be in a period of 30 plus students. It's not going down back to 20 next year. It's going to stay at a higher level, right, for the next couple of years at least. And so do, is the issue, do you think that part of the issue of, of kids, like fewer kids wanting to go to college or a percentage of fewer percentage, a lower percentage wanting to go to college, is that there isn't enough support to help them access that pathway? Or what, what is the?
I think it's a variety of things. I think there could be more support, you know, social workers. I think they have a huge caseload. Same with counselors, even our steps advisors, I think need some more support with, you know, even helping with getting access to alternative pathways, which is what we're trying to do on the side. So there's a few different ways. And also just academic preparedness, like Sophia was talking about. I think ninth and 11th, just my assumption is, you know, when they get to the high school, the academics turn up a notch. So they struggle initially. And then 11th grade is, you know, classic AP tests and probably another, another level up there, but that's just. And then eleventh grade is, you know, classic AP tests and probably another other level up there. But that's just my own.
Are there step, how many steps advisors are at the high school?
There are three, and I can also speak to like the need for more academic support. It is on the other side as well. The other challenge that I recognize is the inequities between the K through eight schools and Brooklyn High School. So the K through eight school, they actually have paid homework center staff that support the students with their homework. At VHS, we actually have volunteers and we need volunteers, but we also need paid staff that I think support students and have an understanding of like the Brooklyn High School curriculum. That's one of the challenges that I noticed immediately is like the lack of academic support. Advisers, where many have, but sometimes even myself, you can't come to me with a math problem. It's like you're going to pass the math test. I hate to say it, but social emotional, I got you. So that's definitely one thing.
Yeah, I think these next two slides are showing.
So what I have here is a current sophomore's report card. As you can see, like the honor classes have the Hs. So at the end of the school year, she earned a C plus in chemistry honors and in physics a B. This is her current report card. If we go down, we can see that she doesn't have any honor courses. But she basically has straight A's. So if she had a tutor or the support that she needed academically, she most likely will continue to take honor courses.
So did she go from honors freshman year and then dropped levels in sophomore year? Okay.
Can you can you say more about why she would have, why she had had a tutor, she would have continued to take honors courses?
She would have the additional support. So when she.
She felt herself.
Yeah, this is this is her words, not mine. So when she goes home at night, her mother's not there. Her mother is unavailable to support her, do her homework. So everything that she's doing, she's doing on her own. Honor classes was rigorous for her. She didn't have the support, the advisors tried to support her, help her stay organized. She did not feel like she could compete or keep up in the honor courses. So she went back down to standards.
Right. And I think what we also talk about academic support is not just from going from failing to passing. You know, from standard to honors, honors AP. And, you know, when our kids end up taking those classes, they can get to great schools and better financial aid packages. You know, financially, it isn't as much of a barrier. So it goes back to the the college.
And it's my understanding, once you, once you drop off an honors cap, it's a lot harder to get that on it too. So so that moment when she decided that without the tutor, she couldn't, she could continue at the honors level, even if we'd supplemented with a tutor later, that 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 difficulty compounds. Is that right? Does that understand it?
I can double check. I'm not, I couldn't say like yes for certain, but I would imagine that that could be the possibility.
So this is, this is part of what I'm working on in my day to day, which is obviously stuff's related, but in short answer, yes. The data we have is that students drop levels at a much higher rate than they rise in levels. And I think a useful way to frame it, this comes from conversations with teachers, is that typically when you're in an honors class as a teacher, you're preparing students to take honors next year. You're imagining my chemistry honors students are going to take biology honors next year. When you're in a standard class, the same is true. I'm assuming my students in standard chemistry are going to take standard biology next year. And so when I've asked teachers who are teaching a standard class, how do you prepare your students to take honors in this subject next year? It is often a question they haven't thought of or haven't intentionally integrated. Certainly, some students do approach attempt levels that they haven't attempted before. It's quicker.
Yeah, it's a really high stakes decision.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and there's a high stakes to trying to jump a level too, because you could be a solid student at one level. And if you're pushing yourself without support, you're putting, it's it's risky, right? Both ways.
The only way to really do it is to take a course in the summer, which many of these kids can't do because they have to work. But to take that, the course that they were taking in the fall and the summer, and then be taken again in the in the fall at the honors level. You know, take it, we we offer it in the summer school programs, many of the courses. So that's a way of getting ahead and pre-learning some of the information so that you feel competent and.
So I'm so I'm a little confused. So the student we're looking at now was the same student that we had before. So did she have support or she didn't have support? She doesn't have support. She's not in the program.
No, she's in the steps success program, but she does not have the academic a tutor or the homework center with a pay para or a paid teacher that actually understands the Brooklyn High School curriculum or the math subject. We did have two volunteers this past winter and spring while they were committed and dedicated. They weren't teachers, so they couldn't, they didn't, they lacked the ability to actually instruct, but they knew how to do the math, but they couldn't teach a student how to do the math.
So is she one of that one hundred forty four students that's steps to success at the high school?
Correct.
You do not have enough paid support staff to give her the support she would need to stay in honors. Is that what we're saying? Okay.
Some quotes from some current VHS junior and that steps Inc. staff who was a step student. So from the junior, when I go see my teacher after school, there are other kids there that have to wait. I'll wait for like twenty minutes. When it's my turn, there's only ten minutes left before she has to leave. So looking for academic support or tutoring or anything. And, you know, the teachers also have a lot on their plates as well. And then from our alumni and the current staff member at Steps Inc. As a former steps success student, my experiences from the fifth grade to the eighth grade was one to remember. So my favorite highlights during that time was being able to connect with advisors, going to Boston College on Thursday to learn about stocks and connecting with college students. So success pushed me in ways where public speaking came easier, prepare me for job interviews. For this, these features truly followed me by my adult years. Likewise, in the summertime, it was fun to get to work and love different kinds of workshops on Fridays. Over my time at Brooklyn High School, it was short-lived. However, the experience was different. There was not as much experience and opportunities.
So is that a matter of not having enough staff because you don't have enough money? I mean, is that what why? Are we not finding more if it's so successful to have them? I'm just curious.
And and were other support? Were they able to get tutoring outside of the program? I mean, is tutoring available at the high school?
I'm going to try to answer one question at a time. I'll start with your question. What was your question?
Well, I'm just wondering, if we know there's a D, what is the obstacle of making that need, having that need met in order with having more tutors?
Funded, definitely funded.
Funding, okay.
And then if they couldn't, if we, if they weren't able to get a tutor through the STS program, were there other tutors available other than the teacher that like, are there other tutoring programs at the high school that they could have accessed outside of the STS program? Do you know what I mean?
I know what you mean. I just got to VHS in November, so I can confidently say like, yes, there are other. But what I've heard from students is that there's no like one to one tutor. So if they do go to a teacher's after hours, they meet with the teacher during X block, there's other kids. So now that they're competing, another for a teacher's time. The other challenge that some of our students face is just coming in organized and knowing what they need help with. So even that sometimes can take time. If you ask a student, like, what do you need, what help with this? I don't know. So some of our teachers, we had launched a celebration academy, which was implemented to basically encourage and empower our students to try to do better academically. Some of our students did jump a lot of grade for quarter three. Some of them had attendance issues, so it wasn't as successful for them. But one thing that I did notice, the teachers that did decide to come into work over February vacation, they were able to help students first organize what they needed to get done and then begin the material. So once again, those are VHS teachers, so they understand the expectations of being a VHS student, and they were able to help the students.
I had a question on the college preview piece. Is that is that happening with the high school students as well? I know this is a quote from someone who was talking about their middle school experience. Is that sort of preview and visit and that sort of thing happening at the high school level?
So the Inc. program? Is that what you're asking about?
No, I'm just asking generally if the steps kids are are getting any kind of preview, college visits, you know, a day in the life sort of thing.
Yes. We went to go visit We just College because, you know, the pandemic, there were no college visits. So we went to We just College over April vacation. And I know years before, Boston College students would come to volunteer during a group called Freshman Academy as well.
Regarding this second quote, this student mentions that there was not as much experience and opportunities at the high school. Is that based on having less staff? Is that based on the structure of the program? Was that that particular student's experience?
I would say it's all three. One, you get from a program as much as you put in as well, like for students, some students access the steps room and the advisors a lot more than others. The other thing I would say, we just hired a full-time Catholic's manager from the steps Inc. side, so that person will be responsible and helping with adding more programming. And also there is like a lack of programming there for steps and the high school as well. So that's why we're hoping to have a robust homework center and then enrichment after.
And enrichment would be more of the experience of opportunities, so access like call Jackson visits or internships, you know, resume builders essentially.
If I could, I think in the past, there was a more robust program at the high school, and I think with some changes in staff and the pandemic, it sort of has not come back to where it was. But to, from my recollection, that Rachel Goodman is also here, who's the president of Steps Success Board. Also has.
Well, I don't want to interrupt if you have more slides. I'm happy to keep going.
Literally just the contact slides. It's like Michael, who is the BHA executive director.
This is a perfect, this is the sort of, my question is, when you're thinking about, for example, gaps in the programming, is it, is there a bright line between like, what is BHA's responsibility versus steps Inc. responsibility versus P S B's responsibility?
Yes. So BHA, like as it makes sense, anything that happens at at housing and resident services, they kind of take care of the school districts is in charge of academics in school time, if it happens during the school day. And then Inc. is after school, after school.
Okay. So what do you, this homework club stipend, which would like, or you were saying, you know, to have paid homework club. Is that counted as after school or is that counted as in school?
So the way it works for the earlier grades is that homework center or organic is counts as in school. And then we have enrichment, which is after school, after school, which we take. So it's kind of.
So some of the programs you jointly fund with P S B, like there might be two staff there and each program contributes a staff member. Is that the idea? Okay. Thank you.
Going back for a moment to the slides that you had that showed sort of the percent levels in quarter two that had these or E's and in quarter three. Do you have the year to year data? Do students generally improve year to year?
I can get that definitely. One thing I I think that why our class is so high as well for this year, for our seniors, is because the number of students that are actually in a credit deficit that are playing catch up. I can count on here that we have five students who are currently in that predicament, but I definitely can get the year to year data for that.
Yeah, and you did college support as well, right?
Yeah, so that's that falls under the Inc. side of the responsibilities. So our college success initiative is where we provide coach and some financial aid support to students who went to college via the two-year, four-year program. And yeah, we support them with, you know, applying for the the FASDA for CSS profile for all the financial aid forms. And then when they actually get to college, because, you know, the majority of our students are first generation college owners, they come across obstacles and challenges that they might not be able to ask their parents about. So our advisor helps them.
So so in the budget book, the the challenge that that this program is seen as the key one, I don't want to to, the key challenge that's looking to face is that transition from K eights to VHS. And and so that's borne out by the data that you presented there as well. If you were to, if you were to name an additional challenge, would it be the need for for more paid staff at the VHS level? Do you see that as like the highest leverage investment at this point? Or or is that one of many? And that was just the example that you gave? Because I was just looking at the budget book description of how we're looking to expand support for SGS, and there's anything about additional paid staffers. I know your news. Oh, great. Well, then, is there anyone who could comment? Because I'm just looking forward. At least this program disproportionately impacts students of color. And I think that is a high priority for the school committee. So looking ahead, if this were to be further strengthened, I'm just curious if there's any data points or even anecdotal ideas about what would be the highest leverage points.
Yeah, I think to Sophia's credit, when she started in November was when we were writing the budget book. So yeah, that's based on best knowledge at the time, obviously. And since she's been here, we've uncovered more items. But certainly, the the transition is important, and that's a broader issue for the district, right? It's not unique to steps. How we get the K eight schools to feed into a single ninth grade experience. I think as we've been talking, shoring up the high school has been really critical. You know, some of what Juan described, actually, both of them described, like the program we can offer at the K eight experience comes from a really strong partnership. Steps Inc. has two staff who are basically dedicated to K eight. We have one advisor at every school at K eight. And in some of the schools, it's not a lot of students that we have a full-time advisor supporting. So they can offer a lot of really dedicated one-on-one attention. When we get to the high school, the scale is just different. And then there's this transition where families have been with one advisor from now third grade through eighth grade. And now they have to learn a new advisor in ninth grade while the academics have kicked up. And so there's a real need to build a relationship really quickly. And then as Sophia described, our homework centers at the high school actually didn't exist for the last couple of years, and she was able to find some volunteers and like scrape it together with no funding. And so dedicating funding to that is one of our goals. Obviously, we know the whole budget situation is tight. And so there's some limited challenges there. And I don't know exactly how many of you were here for this last year, or maybe, excuse me, two years ago, when we were discussing the added adjustment counselors, there was some discussion about making a dedicated steps adjustment counselor. That did not happen. And as we know from a number of conversations, those adjustment counselor caseloads have just ballooned very quickly, much quicker than anticipated, I think. And so while there was some desire to prioritize students in steps on those caseloads, their caseloads are just, they're just big. They filled almost instantly. And so I think, yeah, we're seeing that there's a variety of supports. And as Juan and Sophia both described really well, this is a student population that compared to Brooklyn's average needs just a lot more support. It's why the program exists and we could add a lot more to the program and still have them to grow. So and there are other things that Juan and Sophia haven't brought up that we can add to the list.
So I, we've heard about expansion down to kindergarten. Where are we in that?
We're, so the initial expansion was K to three. So third grade was launched, as I mentioned, in January. And I think we're in a process of planning how to really launch K to two, because third grade was easy enough to build it to fourth and fifth grade, which is after hours university program. But K to two is a whole other, another type of young person. So, you know, we're really a lot of communication conversations. The partnership itself and then some other partners.
Did you end up getting funding?
And that is one of the things I will hope to do. But again, it's a, it is a partnership. We don't want to do anything on our.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm still going back to like problem solving, sort of like the immediate right now with the homework centers. And so I know you mentioned that some of the students are trying to access like their their teachers and maybe some one-to-one support right now. I'm just thinking that in our last quarter, we're trying to make that push for students now at the high school. And I know that there are some like homework supports for, like there's a math homework center and our students just encourage them to try to access the. And our students, I just encourage them to try to access those as well as maybe like teacher hours in the meantime, until we can like work on trying to get some more staff at the steps. But so I think what you're talking about is fundings, like, that you, you have separate steps hours, right? The volunteers you have are separate steps hours versus the other high schools. Like, there's like a science homework support and there's math homework support, right?
Right, and there's also from this, like, talking to students, because I felt my saying, to them, like, why don't you just go to your teacher's homework hours? Or are those hours posted somewhere? And the student's response was, when they do go, there are other kids there, so they're competing for their teacher's attention. We absolutely support our students going to homework centers. A lot of our students are involved in the COW project, so they will step to the COW project as well.
That's good, yeah. And there's just, there's like as many opportunities as they can get for that. Because I know there is like a couple of days they have, like math homework, a general math homework center that's open a couple of days a week in addition to like teacher hours that are separate from that, right?
Yeah, I think a really important thing that I didn't totally understand until I took this role this year, and I spend plus or minus 50% of my time at the high school now. Those homework centers are packed. Like, for the whole range of kids, there are kids who are in danger of failing, who are looking for help. There are kids who have B pluses and are looking to shift it to an A. There's kids with 95s trying to get it to a 96 or 97. And while we certainly staff homework centers and math centers and the science department, the math department do their best, those are heavily accessed by a huge range of students. And as Juan and Sophia have kind of alluded to a little bit, that self-efficacy score that we're seeing from kids at steps means if I walk into a room and there's 40 kids bombing this teacher.
They're that full?
Especially right by a test or right. And I don't know if Matt Dubois or folks have presented to this committee, but general feelings of anxiety, general feelings of stress are up across the board. And so if I'm used to getting straight A's and I'm getting some Bs and I'm nervous about that and I'm activated and I have high self-efficacy, I'm going to my teacher. And we have a lot of students in that boat in Brooklyn High. There's 2,000 kids at the school. And so it makes sense that if I have low self-efficacy, I walk into a room that's full, trying to run around. Right? And so that's part of why at the K8 schools, we've added these additional help centers. So that students have a comfortable, safe space. In some ways, it's a lot of what Keith was talking about with Mecho and creating safe spaces is creating comfortable spaces, right? It's the same challenge. We just have the added layer of the economic situation when you walk around and you see the houses in Brooklyn and you live in public housing. Like, there's an extreme difference sometimes.
And I think you really spoke to the, this whole, I need to know what I, what I need to organize and what I need help with. That's step one. Like, I need to know what I need help with and I need to really get myself organized so I can get the help that I need. And so that's a real challenge for a lot of students in general. And so that's step one. So I, I mean, I really hear the need that you're talking about. So I'm just trying to brainstorm and like. Really trying to like problem solve, like, what can we do right now? I mean, clearly, I'm not going to think of anything you haven't thought of.
Well, I think an example is getting the volunteers. It's something Sophia did. Right now, budget neutral, she hustled and got it done. And the Acceleration Academy. Yeah, I mean, it was collaborative, right? That's the whole point is it's a partnership. And getting the acceleration academies in during the breaks, right? It's something we hadn't done. I stopped by, talked to the advisors, and they were so excited to have this additional support. We had Brooklyn High teachers coming in on the break. We paid them. But like, to, to help. And when it's your own teacher, it's just so much more beneficial. So it's there. I know there was a question here, maybe? No?
I have a question about, if you go back to the slide about the grades, the, the, that one, yeah. Do you have this data longitudinally to show how that's been affected over time? And how it compares over time to the general VHS population?
I think it's possible to get it. I mean, we don't.
Okay, I think it would be really valuable to understand that, because, I mean, these, these are, these are really big numbers.
Yeah.
And, and, and I guess my question is, you know, what does it, what, how does, how big is the gap compared to the overall population? And what do we think it takes to close the gap? And, you know, but having, this is only like the first, you know, step of that story. So getting that all together, I think, would be really helpful to understand.
So I, I think there are two pieces. I definitely think we need to do something about this. But I also think we need to keep in mind that these children have lost two years of schooling. You know, and truly lost it because they haven't been able to access some of the things that other students who have more means can access or have parents who can help them with. I mean, if we go back, if you go back to the, the slide about the kids going to college and where they're ending up. And you look at this and you see the difference. You know, I think that's an important piece.
That's why I'm hoping for the longitudinal data.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, because I certainly remember what we see in 2019, 2021. And correct me, Rachel, if I'm wrong, you certainly remember too. Those are more the common percentages or the graph, the way it would look. And I think 2022 is somewhat of an outlier. I'm not saying this to say we shouldn't do something, because obviously, these kids are just as important as the kids who came before or who did well. But I think we, the understanding of why it's happening is important too in this. And one other thing I wanted to add, many of these steps students, if not all, also had mentors from the community. I don't know if all do or all, or all who want them have them. But that's another piece, part of the program that I think is important for these children to, to have another adult in their life that they can talk to and, and get advice from.
Unfortunately, that part was a little bit disrupted by the pandemic.
I think a lot of the stuff, so we're, and we're seeing the effects of it, unfortunately.
Sorry, just one other thing I think that connects to the things you were just both saying. I'm just wondering what the impact of the pandemic is on the senior class that we're looking at right here and their sort of graduation plans. And I'm wondering how similar or dissimilar that this is, that this might look like if we looked at VHS in general and the plans of the senior class in general. I don't know. I don't know what that is. I suspect it may look different. I'm just not sure how, how different. I'm just wondering in general how the pandemic is affecting our seniors.
Maybe that's something we can get information on.
I'm just wondering, and because you get a lot of anecdotal conversations with the students in the program. I'm just really interested in, in the decisions that they're making and how we can make a positive impact on supporting.
But didn't you mention that one of the reasons why the number is so big is there's a, such jumps, because there are kids who are credit deficient?
I did see, but yes.
So, and do we, do we anticipate that to be the same?
Well, one of the things that we're hoping to counteract that is more support at the high school to avoid. Future, because, yeah, like Sophia was saying, there's, there's decent amount of young people.
Because the academic classes that they're failing or have a D and that they're failing, then they don't earn the credit. And they do that to graduate, you know, a requirement to graduate high school. So if we have students that did not perform well their freshman year and they're promoted to sophomore, then they still did not pass English one. So that it's, there's a possibility that they don't go to summer school, that they can be a fifth year senior or double on English. So these are the things that we're hoping to address as well, with more academic support.
And have we encouraged, I'm sort of following up on what Nancy said, two things. Have we encouraged those students who, who are academically behind to maybe take a fifth year, a postgraduate year? And how many of them might be doing that? Because that, you know, we can give them another year of, of education that might serve them very well. Many kids take a postgraduate year. It's not, you know, I don't know, but to think about.
It's not getting left back anymore. It's, it's.
It's taking advantage of the high school and things they might not have been able to take advantage of. And taking advantage of steps being there for them for another year as they mature and get over the pandemic. I think, you know, it's certainly.
Can we do?
Okay, as long as they don't have enough credits to graduate.
Really? There's an interim one, but I guess it's until the credits are reached, right?
Yeah.
Can I make a request, Linus? This is, rather than asking step staff to crunch this data.
Yeah.
I would, I would appreciate having the longitudinal data that was presented for steps, but also presented for ACE, Excel, a lot of the programs that we have, which are serving special populations of students to understand the overall sort of academic performance. And if, I don't, I mean, you, the measure you used was percent of students who have a D. Maybe that's the right measure. Generally, maybe it's not. It seems reasonable to me because we're thinking about progression, academic progression. But I guess there's other measures too about thinking about the number of students who are in different levels, you know, as we think about this. But I would like to see that for, for all of our programs, how, how we see students doing in terms of, because it also makes me think about the conversations we've heard over and over again, that, you know, extra additional support for, for, is it ACE? And, and all of these programs. And I would like to, I personally would really, I feel like I would benefit from understanding which students, we hear about specific populations of students getting disproportionately underserved. And I would like to hear whether, what we are doing to see all students be able to achieve academic potential. And having that baseline of the overall population as well, I think would be valuable. It's both things, right?
Yeah. Comparing them to the, the total population, let's say.
Yes, and I, and I think it's relevant too. I mean, as we look at these measures, we're seeing these measures in isolation. So, and as you said, you know, are we seeing different graduation plans across the board, you know? But are we seeing different student success rates across the board? It would be helpful to get that holistic picture.
So we're going to do all the programs, including Mecho, Student RELO.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to at least have a pre-pandemic baseline or about a couple. But at least, I know this is a lot of data crunch, but, but the reality is that we're in incredibly resource constrained environment. So if we are, and if we are, we might have to make choices about what we would like to see in terms of trade-offs. And I would like that to be an informed choice, thinking about where to invest in students who are most vulnerable. And, and I don't, I, I know we've seen some windows into this, and especially in terms of like a specific program, but I don't think we've seen multiple programs at one time. And that's to give you a general. Yeah.
I just, I will comment, I, I think I might have been a volunteer for Nanosec. In one of the programs. And it was after school and it was eighth graders. And I have to tell you, by the time school was over, they were done. They, they did not want to do homework. It was such a struggle to get them to do homework that I think we finally decided we have to fall back and recruit. As I said, I wasn't there very long. Somebody invited me to come in, come on Nanosec. But, you know, I, I understand what you're saying about high school, but I think you have a completely different thing going on. Certainly, if it's three to eight or kindergarten to eight. So I appreciate that that takes that additional planning and that perhaps they will, they need more hands-on kinds of project-based experiences than just doing homework. Because they are so done by 3:30, 4 o'clock, you know, or 2:30, whatever that day is, that they need a break and they need, and you know all this, but I'm just, I'm just commenting that we haven't had that conversation, a slightly different conversation than figuring out how to help the kids in high school. And so I, I appreciate the work you're trying to do in the lower grades.
And we've, we've seen some success with a entrepreneurship program that we've been working with the high school students that launched this past month. So partnership with Mass Hire, we were able to, you know, fund the curriculum and a teacher to help, you know, program that. And like, sometimes the kids are a little tired at 3:30, but but they, they show up and they're, you know, they're active and they're participating and, you know, then they are going to be stammered at the end of the session. But, you know, there's, there's points of participation that we were really happy to see.
Anyone else have questions or thoughts they'd like to share?
Yeah, that was great.
I have one other thing. To tell us about the step celebration.
Because you are on TV.
So Steps Inc. has our annual fundraiser this upcoming Wednesday. It's going to be our 20th, well, I mean, but celebrating the 20th anniversary of Steps. It's near the Lars Anderson Auto Museum. You can go to our website and find more information. But we're really excited. It's our biggest, you know, biggest fundraiser obviously of the year. Provides a big chunk of our annual budget. So we're just really, really excited about it.
And it's the first time in over two years where we're actually going to be in person again. So we really hope.
It's outdoors.
That folks will come, because it'll be an opportunity. We're also celebrating our founder, Jared Selzer. It'll be an opportunity for folks to get to meet students who are in the program. We'll be celebrating some of the staff who've been with the program for quite a while. It'll just be really fun. So we hope that folks will, will join us.
All right, thank you very much. Next up, we have the superintendent's entry findings report.
Good evening. Presentation. All right, good evening. I'm going to get started and walk us through the entry findings report committee. You have, we've, we've discussed this, so this is our public presentation of the information that you've shared. I've made a few updates with, with information that's been changed since then. But otherwise, it's, it's what you've experienced before. So the areas that we're going to walk through briefly, the introduction, the method, the summary of the findings, and then also department findings. Our introduction and background. So PSB at a glance, we're again roughly just north of 7,000 students, pre-K through 12, just north of 1,400 staff, 10 schools located in 13 buildings. And approximately 80 of our students are in out-of-district placements. Our mission is to ensure that every kid develops the skills and knowledge to pursue a productive and fulfilling life, to participate thoughtfully in a democracy and succeed in a diverse and evolving global society. Just a little bit into our superintendent landscape, as I share with you, I am part of NISIP Cohort 12, which consisted of at the time, 43 brand-new superintendents across the state, across the Commonwealth. As recently as two weeks ago, some of the brand-new superintendents have thrown in the towel. So some of those districts have already begun searches for people that were in my cohort that I was on the case with. And our current transitions for superintendents on March 10th, when I shared this with you, there were 12 new hires across the state and there were approximately 22 searches going on at that time. When I spoke to the Superintendent Association this morning, there have been 45 superintendent transitions total for this year with probably another five to 10 transitions, just in district leadership across the state.
Like 300, just 300.
Through 70, through 70, I think.
307, isn't it? 306 or 307?
Because of the regionals and.
Brownie's life.
So a look at Brookly, at our superintendent landscape. 20 superintendents in 150 years. And again, the asterix is there because in the early years, we've not been able to nail down some of the gaps that we have there. But importance is seven superintendents in the last six years. But importance is seven superintendents in the last six years, and that includes interims, actings, and some permanent. So there has been a lot of volatility and transition here in the public school of Brookline within the last, in the most recent time. So we can see that in the early days, Brookline has benefited from having state stability in its leadership. And so our goal is to again stabilize the system over the course of time. When we look at strategic leadership, why are we asked three broad questions? Why are we doing this? What are we doing and how are we doing it? Why are we doing it this way? Why are we, why are we doing this and why are we doing it this way? Are we doing the right thing and how do we know? And how does it connect with other things? How does it connect to other things we're doing to have maximum impact? And I think that's what you just experienced in the STEPS presentation, is drilling down into that particular program. But then when we drill back out or zoom back out, how do we have that interconnectivity across the system as well as its impact and influence on other areas? So what you saw this afternoon, what you experienced this afternoon, it's exactly the way we're thinking about leading through and managing through our system. What is an entry plan? An entry plan allows incoming administrators the opportunity to learn about the district values, goals, aspirations, and challenges. In other words, it's a process by which I'm able to learn about the strengths and challenges of our system. And this will aid in the development of a strategic plan. That's one aspect of entry. The other thing is, is it gives us insight. Again, we have a fairly new senior leadership team. And we are again experiencing transition in that team. We acknowledge and celebrate Casey. But we also understand that, that the team expands and contracts over time. And so we recognize that. But our entry plan is a little bit unique in that it's expanded form. So it's not only did I do an entry plan, but our senior team members also did an entry plan. So now we have a much wider approach. And as my mentor shared with me, this was something unique that we did in Brookline that he hasn't seen others do across the state. So this is a model that I'm sure others will start grappling or gravitating to. The components of an entry plan, information gathering, analysis, recommendations, as well as strategy and implementation. So in the information gathering stages, what are the stories? The PSB community and its stakeholders are telling me. What are the stories that the data will have that we have on our district tell us? And then what are the stories I'm getting in my own observations? Our analysis and recommendations, based on what I've seen, what themes or patterns have emerged, what norms, cultures, and values do we want to maintain? What do we want to change? And then how can various aspects of PSB work together so that meaningful and sustainable change can occur? And so one of the things that I, I did say, I said, you know, one aspect of doing an entry plan is work towards a strategic plan. But it also helps me with the day-to-day operations and management of the system. And so while we define the entry plan for a period of time, you don't stop learning in this work. It's ongoing. So I don't want people to misread that aspect of it. So the specific objectives is to get to know the school district and its people as fully as possible in a brief period of time, outside the daily context of crisis and problem solving, to examine key issues in the system, systems past in order to make sense of how issues are handled and to identify the norms that affect how the organization may function in the future, to examine key operating systems, their efficiencies, and make further recommendations for refinement, to identify the tasks which need to be done and to rank them in priority order, to establish how these tasks should be accomplished and to generate a district strategy grounded in the entry findings. So the timeline of when this began, I share with you the pre, pre-phase one. Bless you. Was February through June. So I identify February because you were interviewing me and I was interviewing you. And we found a match and we agreed to engage in that match together. And then there was the transition period with Dr. Marini, certainly who was very, very helpful at the time and continues to be. Phase one of the process was July through August. Phase two was September through February. And then phase three, where we are is sharing the conclusions and information out. And then phase four will be the launch of a strategic planning process. And that strategic plan, again, is going to be focused on education. Share with you the need for a facilities master plan as well as a financial, long-term finance, financial plan. But the strategic planning process is our educational platform. So the method.
Can I just ask clarification? So the strategic plan is education only, does not include facilities or?
Not, not, no.
Right now.
Okay. Well, not right now.
Please excuse the interruption. I have a delivery from the Brookline Educators Union for the superintendent and the school committee. As of about twenty minutes ago, the Brookline School Committee has taken a vote and we will be striking as of Monday if there is no contract settled before the weekend. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you so much. So our method that we're, that we use was guiding questions. What are the, what processes and approaches are deemed highly successful and high functioning? What processes and approaches would benefit from review or revision? And what priorities should PSB establish for our work? So those were the guiding questions. The sources of information, what I've seen, what I've heard, what I've counted. What I've seen, observations within and outside of our schools, thirty-plus official school visits conducted, thirty-plus drop-in visits. What I've heard, formal and informal interviews, a hundred-plus meetings, four hundred thirty individual meetings within the community. What I've counted, analysis of district data, ongoing review of district artifacts, existing policies, as well as bargaining contracts. The summary of findings. A look in the mirror. So this is essentially what people have told me about the system, what I've seen, what I've experienced. Overall district summary, overwhelming love of education. A system, a system and community really care about and value public education. Our diversity is one of our greatest assets. We are like a family. Our system offers a wide range of opportunities to our students. The town invests and supports and believes in the PSB. What's needed? We need stable leadership. Leadership turnover is a problem. Gaps exist between expectations and reality. Performance gaps continue to exist for some of our students. We must address equity and equitable outcomes amongst our students. We must certainly address our finances, a need for clearly defined roles and responsibilities, and the need for a strategic plan and direction. Some feedback that we received from a parent survey. There's a range of offerings and programs that advance students to college and career readiness. There are lots of opportunities to try new things, enrichment and opportunities to get involved. Involved. My child has had to leave PSB because their needs weren't met. My third child left the district because of sped needs not being met. Repeated staff changes and shortages, lack of consistency and available inclusion opportunities and differentiation, not the fault of staff and principal. They tried their best with what they had. There's a caring staff and teachers where they care about more than teaching. They care about our kids. And I think we could certainly see, say that we saw that with our Cavalier Award winners tonight. I'm grateful to have a black school superintendent, but my kid needs black and brown teachers and culturally aware teaching trainings for white teachers. Some things are beginning to happen to change the culture of the schools, but there's a long path ahead. Science education is incredible. Both of my children love science and I know it is thanks to the teachers. My child has struggled mightily with mental health since his dad died on his last day of kindergarten. Staff have consistently been supportive, patient, and flexible in ways that have allowed my child to do remarkably well academically and socially. It is critical to align budget priorities in a sustainable way with educational priorities of families and children. So what I've seen with patterns that have emerged. So I grouped these into six broad categories. Culture and core values, instructional core, racial diversity and inclusion, racial equity, diversity, and inclusion, leadership team, school committee, finance, facilities, and operations. So for our culture and core values, faculty and building leaders are highly regarded and respected by students and parents. Overall perception that PSB teachers are highly qualified and are passionate about their content areas, enduring commitment to student wellness, best practices, and educational excellence. So the way I've organized this is sort of the, the left side are what we consider pros or strengths. And the right side is opportunities for improvement. So the district provides extensive, high-quality extracurricular opportunities for students. Teachers care about students and make close personal connections with students and families, positive feelings and associations with individual schools. And this is under culture, again, culture and core values. Voice concerns over morale and expressed initiative overload. And express initiative overload, meaning that we do a lot of things and it burns people out in that regard. Concerns around cultural proficiency foster discussions of inclusivity and acceptance. The need to build relationships of trust and collaboration between district leadership and staff. For the instructional core, statewide metrics indicate that PSB is consistently among the highest in academic performance within Massachusetts districts. Various models of intervention are in place under development across K-12. And then students and teachers are provided with necessary and additional resources to enhance the learning experience. So for our instructional core, tension exists between consistency and autonomy. So you'll see that that's, that's a strength and an opportunity for improvement. Special education services are provided both within the district and outside the district to meet a growing and complex population. High needs are in place for students and are shared among faculty and parents. The level of discourse in classrooms is rigorous and promotes higher order thinking. Continuing the extensive work in the K-12 curriculum results in vertical and horizontal alignment based on the Massachusetts frameworks. And you'll see a little bit more, a deeper dive into that a little later. While data and collection is extensive and K through eight benchmarks and common assessment, data collection at the high school is at the course and section level. And again, that's one of the questions that you all asked about is how do we look at this at a, on a broader level? A review of a continuum of special education services and resources has provided a guide for creating access to general education in students. And so again, this was a special education review that was done and we have feedback. And again, that will be incorporated into the strategic planning work when we get there. Development of a long-range, long-range vision for teaching and learning based on inquiry and the visualization and problem solving using technology as a tool would maximize its potential impact. PSB and BHS can establish priority areas for professional development and pedagogy to further the extensive work in K-12 curriculum completed over the past four years. So again, how do we get synergy out of our various systems? Racial equity, diversity, and inclusion. And again, Janae Utaro did an extensive deep dive into this force. Educational equity is an emerging area of focus, and not only for the school system, but also for the community. A clear investment in the resources to facilitate learning and willingness to learn from the community and opportunities for stakeholder involvement, that is, community, staff, parent, and student voice are growing. So for our racial equity category, the diversity in our student population is a strength. We have an engaged and committed faculty and staff. High achieving students and educators are noted as a strength. Involved parent communities, I can attest to that's a strength of the system and a desire for more professional learning to reinforce learned practices and go deeper into the adaptive work. Again, that's an, both a, a, a strength as well as an opportunity. Continued need to diversify and retain diverse staff. A fear of loss and behavior change. Fear of loss and behavior change are barriers to the pursuit of equity for educators. Structural model for our school does not necessarily provide space for the diversity, equity, and inclusion work, meaning time, resource, all of those types of things. And our student and adult dissatisfaction around belonging, culture, proactive work, and the response to bias incidents. So all of those, again, are opportunities to improve our system. When we look at our leadership team, we have a highly committed group of building leaders. We have a fairly new central leadership team with a variety of experiences and diverse settings. And it's an opportunity for new direction and focus on the organization. So our leadership team, student centered, relatively new group of building leaders, many promoted from within the organization. There's a deep knowledge of students, families, faculty, and staff. New central leadership team, there's excitement in the new team. Positive relationship between building leaders and teachers. Since 2015, PSB has had seven superintendents, acting, interim, and permanent. There have been numerous cabinet members and the district has experienced tremendous turnover at central office administration. We need stability. And our school committee, members, our membership has been stable. Folks are engaged and reflective of the community's needs, invested in and committed to the success of the district, and strong relationships with town partners. The school committee is strong and well, well-utilized subcommittee structure that covers the range of PSB affairs. That's a strength and also an opportunity to improve practice there as well. Demonstrated openness to learning and growing as a committee. Reflective school committee is focused on the needs of students, faculty, and staff. Navigating the line between governance and management. And again, this is indicative of the amount of transition. So in those times of transition, there is a strong need for the leadership to step up and take, manage things. But then also, when we get to that point, we also have to understand the difference between governments, governance, and management. Continue working on public communication and continue defining the core job of the committee, i.e. providing guidance and support to the superintendent. And our finance, facilities, and operations department. State-of-the-art builds, new builds, renovations provide a highly productive and exceptional learning environment. The Brookline community has historically supported school budgets and other operational plans. And alternative funding outside exists through opportunities from private and community groups. So lots of support there. For our finance, facilities, and operations, there's a tremendous amount of investments in our building infrastructure. The community historically supports schools and invests in schools. And what we're saying now is that through strong fiscal stewardship and maximizing grant opportunities, we are in the process of strengthening our fiscal capabilities here. So when we go over to the needs for improvement, we must restore community confidence in PSB finances, the need for a long-range facility, financial, and CIP master plans. And we noted that PSB was not in compliance with one of the mass general laws with respect to not having the school committee sign warrants. And so we've actually implemented that this school year. Now, this is the expanded form. So you're going to see some of our departmental findings from each of our division chiefs. So out of the Office of Teaching Learning, Leslie Ryan Miller and her team provided these findings for, for the report. A lack of shared vision for instruction. Particular curricula is not fully aligned and updated to state standards and frameworks. So that process, that work is underway. There's a lack of professional development office provided by the district. The structures or requirements for teacher participation is limited. Public facing documents, sometimes inaccurate and need to be updated. And I think I can remember, I think Jennifer talking about that when we were looking at some form of special education pieces there. Scheduling continues to impact teaching and learning opportunities. Complex scheduling challenges related to shared staff. The short school day that we have, in addition to the programming, without extending the school day, make it different. The short school day that we have in addition to the programming without extending the school day make it difficult. To meet our structured learning time requirements, and so while folks are very creative with this. That is something that we want to pay close attention to. Our K five curriculum requirements exceed the number of instructional minutes available. The opportunities. Program reviews, social studies, middle school, and English learner are currently engaged to collect information and develop structures. A unified scope and sequence for K five. And then defining our K eight master schedules as a first step for the system-wide consistency. And I think I shared with you at one of our earlier meetings, the senior team has launched schedule review meetings this year. With all of our our K eights. And as well as high schools as undergoing some form of this. And our goal is to continue to continuously improve this process as we get better at it.
Marius, can I ask you a question? We wait till the very end to ask questions, or should we ask them as you go on the departmental stuff? Do you mind rolling it back one slide? This to this slide, sorry, wait, where to go? He's presenting, oh, there you go, okay. Do you clarify that the bullet about the structures or requirements for teacher participation is limited? Participation in what, what are we doing?
Do you want to?
Which which?
The fourth bullet.
The structures or requirements for teacher participation is limited?
Yes, it's limited in terms of professional development.
Oh, so that's related to the previous?
Yes.
Okay, I see, and then. The last bullet about K five curriculum requirements exceed the number, so does that mean that we are not meeting our? What does that mean in terms of what's happening?
Yep, so yeah, great question, Mariah, so um. We are meeting our, so so Desi does not have a requirement for time on learning. It it doesn't go any deeper than just amount of days in school. But where we're running into issues is that there are many of the curriculums that we have chosen. Require a certain amount of time each day. And if you put those together, they exceed the amount of time we actually have in school day. So for example, thinking about investigations that require sixty, really seventy minutes a day because you have. Turk investigations and then ten-minute math. We also need time for word study, writer's workshop, reader's workshop. All of those curriculums that we've bought into, they have a suggested amount of time. And when you put them together, it just it's.
Thank you for clarifying, that's very helpful to understand that, okay.
You're welcome.
And well, actually, just to identify even more. Our school day, how much shorter is it than most school days?
Look at the specifics on it, it is, it is a short day because we're. Because again, when you look at what Friday does. That reduction that comes out.
So there's two pieces, there's that, and also our six, or seven and eight is counted as elementary school, nine hundred hours. And not middle school, which is nine fifty.
Nine ninety.
Nine ninety, sorry. It's nine hundred and ninety.
Meaning if they were in a middle school environment, they would be extended attending extended hours. That's a three thirty.
So do we have to get a dispensation for that?
No, because we're, it's considered a K through eight school.
All right. Office of Student Services. Casey. I think the special education review encapsulates quite a bit of this, but. Increased needs with limited capacity, student needs are certainly increased due to the pandemic. While staffing remained a challenge. That was an unfulfilled position and previously reduced led to increase in work for our current director structure. I think we lost a director. And then increased complaints have led to more time investigating, and there's a significant amount of time. That goes into investigations, and actually, I'll say it now on this slide. Ty, our human resources director and I were talking earlier about. Since the law changed. Around Title IX investigations, just the amount of almost need full-time people for this level of work now. I increased collaboration with Office of Teaching and Learning, so this year we saw. Tighter work between student services and teaching and learning, which they do, should be working closely together. And a great example of that was addressing significantly the significant disproportionality. The dyslexia, dyslexia screener implementation and child study teams. And then again, the special education program review that you all have seen in case presented. On the Office of Equity, again, Janae shared much of this, I think, with the committee. All educators being evaluated this year, prioritizing S E L and anti-racism work. The focus focuses on timely, meaningful feedback toward educator goals connected to equity. Elevates and prioritizes the work in clearly defined ways. Our variable awareness and understanding from community that structural racism and bias perpetuates and exacerbates. Disparities within the P S B. So there have been the create, the creation of new resources and professional development, the equity website. See training and other offerings in the equity PD menu. So we are making big investments there. This school year, community-focused groups, the care, the parent coalition, school equity teams, staff workshops, and. Level adults learning about system and challenges. And since then, certainly the committee has added the D E I J. Subcommittee. There's a lack of reciprocal transparency on disruption learning and movement within the adult community, so the E L Ts. And full faculty trainings dedicated to adult learning include opportunities to share growth and feedback with colleagues, students, and families.
We saw this office.
Sure.
So my understanding is that Janae is working with all protected classes, but I know in the earlier slides. It was primarily race-based, and I'm curious about. Work on other protected classes.
I I will get her to get a response to you on that aspect of it, but yeah, it definitely impacts. Yep. Office of Finance and Administration and Finance. Past forecasting errors have eroded confidence and trust in future financial projections. Increased collaboration with school committee and town departments to ensure compliance with mass general laws and deadlines. We filed our twenty twenty-one end of year report and it came back clean this year, so Sam, did I say that correctly?
Yes, no, no findings.
No findings. Management rebuilt the admin and finance team revolving fund oversight forecasting. And then greater coordination with the Medco funds. Operational efficiencies, outsourcing of ref repayments, procurement card restructuring. Looking at compliance, filing overdue reports, implementing mandated expense warrant. Oversight by the school committee and improving our quarterly report.
Is that all?
And our Human Resources Office, the existing H R systems are in need of refinement and restructuring. There are tremendous errors with pulling accurate data and require many hours of human. Human hours to actually go and check and verify. That data, scrubbing the P S B H R redate data needs reconciliation across three teams. Each team, and so it's it's one of these examples where each team inputs something into munis, but the other team doesn't necessarily see it. Or can't see it or can't make changes, so our data infrastructure. And again, the teams are working very well with our town partners. But again, when we look at our infrastructure, there are tremendous needs there. Yes, ma'am.
Do we need a different system? I know that that's a big question.
It's a big question, and we don't own the system, so it's our town, town system. So we work with what we have.
What if we went rogue and got our own system?
We can't do that because it has to connect.
Have to jive, okay.
And we picked this one together with the town, it was best one available at the time.
Can we convince the town to get a new system?
I'm not sure there, I'm not sure if it's the system or the working together.
Yeah, so it's figuring with the latter to be truthful, if you're talking munis, I apologize for interjecting. But that that's used throughout the state, I think the issue, and I'm working very closely and collaboratively with. Justin Casanova Davis, who is the finance director and. We're committed to making the system work for us versus us working for the system. It's just going to take a little bit more time.
Right. Employee data information and accessibility continue to be a challenge. That's entering and pulling and extracting it, developing and implementing a new hire onboarding records module. Various trainings and paperwork have been converted to electronic processes. And as I shared with you all, there, human resources was an area in need of tremendous. Refinement and Ty working with Gio, Chris, Lynette, and Will. They've been doing some amazing work this year in that. Instituteed templates for organized interview and exit interview processes. And collaboration with town payroll led to restructuring for onboarding. The new hire paperwork process for employee, our employees. And all, yes.
Last one question, so on the second to last bullet on that one, so does that mean we're doing exit interviews for everybody? I remember we talked about this before, I don't remember getting a super clear answer on. Do we have just like a standardized true exit interview as opposed to just offboarding someone through paperwork, is it an actual exit interviewer?
I will say yes, but the the opportunity is there where the people actually engage in it, but I will confirm that with time, but my understanding right now is yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and one thing that you left out was how Ty managed to institute within a month. The ability to have the data on vaccinations.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
That was a huge, very well.
I think we try to forget that.
If you don't remember.
That's a good point.
Well, it's not past history because that's still an employee, a condition of employment.
Right, right.
Absolutely, but it pulled out many strands of hair. Office of Strategy and Performance, the specific focus on internal and external communication, so. This group is data, this is communications, and this is registration. So public presentation templates, so you know, the PowerPoints that we're using, you're starting to see a consistent. Theme and thread of those being presented throughout the organization. The weekly superintendent updates and then the COVID nineteen dash website dashboard documentation. Are funneled through strategy and performance. O S B collaborates across multiple departments. And the continued F T changes in the department have implications on what we can and cannot get accomplished. Again, this is, this is our entire data source for this district. But it's the compliance reporting, federal and Desi. Data inquiry is limited due to the capacity to collect and analyze the data. And and as an example, there were over five hundred registrations for one person in the summer of twenty twenty who also. Processes the exits as well, and so with that, that concludes the summary of entry findings. This is certainly not everything that I've learned about the system, but I think it just encaps- encapsulates. Sort of the broad range categories and things that have emerged.
Can I ask you a question, Marius? I I know you're doing this departmentally, but are you going to be looking at sort of the pillars of schools as well of of their own experiences of what goes well by school or?
That's what what I'm trying to do, so yes, but I that that will be at a later phase. It's not part of this right now, I've been trying to be intentional about being in schools, looking for what's similar, looking what, looking at what's different. But also thinking about it through the departmental lenses also, so a good portion of that, I look at it through the vantage point of teaching and learning. As well as student services.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this presentation, it was quite informative. Do members have any additional questions? I know that we were asking as the presentation went, but. Any further thoughts? No?
All right, seeing none. Thank you again.
Can I make one comment? It's not a question, it's a comment. One of the things, this ties to the earlier presentation with steps as well. And I'm struck always in looking at the many programs we have that. We have these amazing, you know, creative educators and administrators who've developed a variety of programs. And there's so many programs. And it's just so many, and I and I sometimes, it would it would be really valuable as we're going through this process of being able to have a sort of. A data-driven, at least as one window into which of these programs. Are doing what needs to get done most successfully, and does it mean that we should be thinking about. Expanding some of those or applying some of those lessons learned to some of the other programs that perhaps consolidating. We're thinking about how certain programs that might be doing it really well could be expanded another and and fold in other other programs. Overlapping, or exactly, or are they overlapping? I mean, I just think that there's a lot of different stuff going on here. And and watching those slides that you presented, it's it's evident, I mean, the amount of of amazing things that are going on. But it's a lot of, a lot of different programming and how we could be. If it's possible to be streamlining things, it's just, it's clear that there's so much that could possibly be there.
Yeah, and thinking about that, it's it's also looking at just exactly what you're saying, program reviews.
Yeah.
Periodically, and so we're thinking about those aspects of the organization as well.
It's been helpful, just let me ask one may comment on that, which is, we've heard about the ones that Leslie has already initiated and that Casey, you just finished with your program. But in the same way, we think about buildings and like their own renovation cycle, like what is the for, what is the the program review forecast? The five, I don't know, five-year, ten-year, I don't know what the cycle is, but knowing when those are coming. I think also would be really valuable to sort of have that forward-facing for all of the programs and how you see that going down. It would just be, it would be very valuable, I think, for us, because even having that list, like. It it's again, like, there's just so many programs, and if it's like, oh, by the way, Leslie's running like a hundred program reviews over the next ten years because we have a hundred programs to review. That's something else to wrap our brains around too, because that's a huge amount of work. Not just to run the programs, but then to review them, just reviewing them, so.
So in the past, we have had, from the Office of Teaching and Learning, I think it was mostly. A list and a sort of a description of all these programs, including, at that time, was probably. But before, oh, O F C. Opportunity for change, before ACE began, ACE sort of morphed into. I mean, O F C morphed into ACE, but there was a whole list with how many kids were in the programs, which, you know, the sort of description. Descriptors of kids who would be eligible for it. I know we have that somewhere in either in your office or even in a school committee presentation. That could be a helpful thing to start from in terms of laying it out, because you can have a student. Who is in steps in the calculus project in ACE and, you know, what else?
Specialized.
And specialized, okay. And so, you know, you have to, you know, it's it's a, you have to think about that, I guess, and see.
But then part of that, I mean, we heard, like, we heard tonight, I think it was Juan said. That they've had lower program attendance, and part of that is because, oh, these students also participate in this and this and this, right? Well, what are we doing then to think about how we can create a program that? I I just seems like we're, if there's students who can be served by, you know, five different programs, are there opportunities for us to be thinking about how to serve? More students in fewer programs and do those programs even better?
Or or get more kids into those other, into the programs so that, you know, they're serving more, right? You know, it could be one either way.
I do second Mariah's points that in order to make informed decisions, it'll be very helpful to be able to look at. The data and the trajectory and the progress or lack thereof, hopefully progress of students in these different programs. Without knowing that, it's very difficult to perform our roles of evaluation. So I know that's a Herculean task to. So I know that's a Herculean task to engage in that type of data aggregation, but it would be very helpful.
Stephen? Just a kind of point on that. I like data too. I want data to evaluate programs. And I also am all for consolidation, whether it's duplication, but I think that that it's going to be very difficult to have standardized metrics across very many of these programs. And I don't think streamlining for the sake of streamlining, just have fewer programs is necessarily a good idea. I understand that evaluating a number of programs is costly, you cannot bazillion programs, but I would just also caution us against the fantasy that we can have standardized metrics that cross too many programs. I think it's the strength of Brooklyn schools that we have so many programs. And also think it's the way that I'm like educator passionate.
Yeah, I I agree, but I also think that what Mariah had asked for earlier, which is to go launch to me across a couple of the metrics that Steph presented tonight for all of our programs. All of our special programs and then against our standard program is a really helpful way to begin having a discussion about it. I don't think we can have either quantitative or qualitative or any other informed discussion without a start.
Nancy?
Yeah, because before we we put lots of, because they all might be under-resourced, right? And so before we start stocking up across the board, it might be nice to know, I mean, Helen, you probably have some background on this. To know, well, maybe can they all work symbiotically, maybe, you know, can they work? What can one support the other? So because when there's that many of them, then they're probably all underfunded. When you maybe not consolidate, but that's, I think streamlined is the wrong word. Maybe we can see how they can work more efficiently together. I guess that's what I'm saying.
Jennifer?
I was just gonna say, I don't think it can, I don't think it can hurt to look at the information over time, but I think we also have to look at they, these are human beings and and we're not, to Stephen's point, I think it's not necessarily going to be as simple as just looking at the data. I think the question that I want to ask is are the, are we meeting the needs that the students have? Are the programs working for these students? And are are these the best programs for these students? Are the programs working for the students? Are there other ways that we can help meet these needs? And so like if we are pulling kids in several directions to get them sort of patching programs together, is there a better way to do it? So I think, you know, I think it can hurt to look at that data and 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 look at it over time. And then look at the the human beings that are in front of us and see if it's meeting their needs. So I, you know, I sort of, I'd like to take that approach to it.
Right. I I agree with Jennifer. The way I see it, it's not so much that we want to take a cold, calculating purely quantitative look at the data, but it does spark conversation, discussion. It does provide some means by which we can evaluate imperfect means certainly, but at least it's something rather than guessing at it. And then certainly the the more human elements that you're alluding to, and also the individual educator passions and the nuances that separate one program from another, that would also emerge as part of that analysis. Saying, well, even though Program A has resolved X and Program B is not performing as well under that metric, Program B is really designed more for purpose W, and so therefore, so it's it's more for discussion purposes. Sam?
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. I mean, there's a whole subjective piece to it. There's this idea that you can't say, you know, how much does it cost per student because the results that we're looking for would be quite different. But but I think our role is to I look, I look at the budget, that's what we do on the school committee, and and to see which of those programs based on the evaluations that the departments are doing need to be funded more, which ones could be either more efficient or maybe they don't even do what they're supposed to be doing. I I don't know that it's our role to evaluate the programs, but I do think it's our role to help fund the programs, especially those that deserve to have more funds because they're doing something very special or something we really need. And think about those that aren't quite performing as we want. Does that need more money or does it need less emphasis? So those are just some things I'm thinking about.
Go ahead, Mariah.
The other thing that we saw data on grades, but the other data that, so I think it was Sophia pulled it. Why is all the data was Sophia's data? But the results of the universal survey and thinking about the SEL component of this too. So it's not just about grades, it's about, you know, are are some of these programs, is it possible that some of these programs are are reducing the discrepancy in, for example, self-efficacy or confidence or the other metrics that are in the universal survey? And thinking about, again, how can we look at each program's strength, see how we can leverage that more broadly? See how we're doing the best for our kids across not just academics, but socio-emotional capacity as well. Some programs might be doing great in this and and not so much in the academic. And then that's an opportunity to think about how we how help them refine their mission possibly. I don't know. It's just, I want to make sure that we're doing the best for as many kids as possible with what we've got.
The first place, the first step is to look at how many, what they're doing.
Anyone else? Questions, comments?
Last two things I'll say is so Ty confirmed that she has a process set up for exit interviews. And Janay confirmed that, yes, this strategies are being designed for all groups. And there's work happening with 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 the various groups that have been identified. All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So that leads us into Subcommittee and Liaison Reports. First up, Finance.
Can I skip? Because I need to pull up the spreadsheet that I was gonna, I had it and I lost it.
Sure, no problem.
In two minutes, I'll be ready.
Capital, go ahead, Helen.
So unfortunately, Capital had to cancel on Wednesday. We were going to meet. We will be meeting on the thank you to discuss the repair and maintenance budget that now has been fully funded and to set up some priorities for that, to find out what has been done to date this year. And also to start to to think a little bit about CIP, et cetera. So there's a lot that's going to be on the capital budget, capital agenda for next week. In two weeks, rather. I'm trying to think, the peer school, I'm not sure if I announced it before, but there will be a community meeting to go from A to where we are today, so people can catch up on what happened, where we've, what we've, what has been designed, where the design is at now. And some of the costs I think we will have by June 13th. It's an evening meeting for both parents and the community, and certainly a school committee members who want to come to see the design. If you go online, there are pictures of the latest design from the last minutes of the peer school building project. It's really getting exciting when you start to see things and, you know, actually, it's very beautiful what they've put together. So we we hired Consigly, as you guys approved today, as our construction management company. Construction CM at risk. Which means that they basically work together with us on the the project, helping us to see cost savings where we can. And they they are hired now through August 31st, when we go to MSBA to hopefully get our approval. We're still working on a date for the debt exclusion for this project. Hopefully by the next meeting, this will be all determined and set up. Did I leave out anything?
Remember the traffic study?
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. So the next meeting of the School Building Committee, the Peer School Building Committee, is next week, Thursday, which date is the
19th.
Thank you, the 19th. There will be the traffic study presentation. I think we will get a copy of it ahead of time. I'll make sure all the school committee gets it. I didn't see it, but I didn't, I haven't been online.
I asked Jen for it. She might have just seen it.
No, she would give it to all of us. I would have gotten it as the co-chair, I would have gotten it. I haven't seen it yet. I did see that she said, yes, she would get it to you, but I can't remember. Anyway, it may have come today and I didn't see it. Irrelevant. It will come out to everybody. That we've asked the traffic consultants to really examine school street in addition to all the other things that they do. Drop off pickups and and garage entrance and exits. But to to really concentrate on school streets and whether or not that there are ways to mitigate traffic on school street, whether during school hours to close it, to have it one way. To have a traffic light. At the minimum, we will have a raised crossing, a large raised crossing across and the flashing lights. But the question is, should there, can there be more depending on what the traffic consultants say and what that would entail? So it should be an interesting meeting with the traffic consultants. I think that's it for peers. Driscoll is moving. I drove by it today and the steel is going up. Maybe you want to talk about that.
I was going to later, but
Now's the time.
I was gonna do additional liaisons, but yes, now's the time to drive by Driscoll. The the steel is actually going up really quickly. We'd like to have one additional tour before the, before the building gets buttoned up, because it's actually going to be buttoned up very, very soon.
What is buttoned up mean?
Meaning you can't access the hole anymore. So if you'd like to actually get into the hole, your last opportunity, if you, let me know if you want to go on a tour and and we'll set that up. Send me an email. I'll schedule with the team so we can get folks going. But I I do encourage everyone to drive by Westport in the Washington Street side. It's really, every day is is something really exciting. And they're doing really great things with the students in terms of learning about the engineer aspects and things like that. The educators this week have been going and deciding whether they want triangular desks for their teams or hexagons or whatever, whatever works best for that grade span in terms of collaborative learning. So that's we're really getting to tomorrow. We have coaches meeting. We're actually looking at floor tiling and things like that. So we're really getting into the finishing pieces of of the work and and building inside the building and and doing that in short order, the next couple of months. You'll see next year, some floors coming. You'll see the subfloor is actually starting to emerge as you drive by as well.
So one of the things, just to highlight on what Val said. In every new school building project that we do, we try and outfit it new. So that that way, you know, you, the whole building starts out, you know, with with new stuff. We reuse some of the the furniture that's still good. Remember, it's traveled, well, in this case, it hasn't traveled. But in most cases, the furniture travels with the kids to Old Lincoln back or to the nursing home, wherever kids went. But we do reuse the the other good furniture, but we try and and make sure so that we we know that we have everything that we need to begin the school year, really.
And it's an expanded, as most people know, it's an expanded, it it's going to be a different size section school. So there's also just additional.
Exactly.
Furniture as well. And the furniture that's there that we have is is very well loved.
And justice is coming along, as most people have seen, they've opened up now the sort of patio area in front of the high school with the tables and stuff. They reseeded the grass once to hopefully have some grass there. When the kids start to play, when, and that, I'm not even sure. I don't think that will happen till the fall at the earliest, if then. Because it needs a couple of growing seasons to be able to to play on it. And the
Plantings on the side, on Cypress, all of the side.
Yeah, there's the plantings along the the tapestry building, and there will be a dedication. Linus, do you know the date? Because I I remember being asked, do we have that date?
The June 8th, I have now. At five o'clock.
June 8th at five o'clock. And we should really make sure that the community knows that, maybe get it out on Facebook. So that people can
Why don't we tell us first?
We didn't know.
We didn't have a date, so.
So I think it was, well, there's still time, you know, you can get a dress between that.
I just got pants instead of pajamas.
But it's exciting. I mean, I think to go into, I've been into both. Not as much as I would like, but I've seen most of both buildings and they are spectacular. You'll be really happy and proud to say, these are Brooklyn High School buildings. And they've done a wonderful job with the T for the community. It's cost us nominal like, because the T has been very difficult, just everybody knows, a lot of the cost overruns had to do with the T. Hopefully, we will be getting some money back from the T. Because they had a an account that they would draw off for all the times they had to shut down for us. So there's, there hopefully will be some money coming back there. I think that's it for buildings at this point, and capital.
Does anyone have a question for Helen regarding capital related?
I'm ready to do my finance thing.
All right, go ahead, Mariah.
So Finance is meeting next week, so I don't have a report from Finance, but for the accounts payable in the past five weeks. It has been $2,772,392 that have gone out. And most of that is the sort of normal things that I, we always talk about, you know, particularly food, school supplies, district tuition. Just sort of standard things that are coming through the doors. But this week, I I came to sign and Sam wasn't there and I left him a little note and my note said what are trout chillers? Because, you know, usually there'll be some things, a lot of questions, and and I thought, why are we buying things like chillers for trout? So Sam texted me later on in the day and he said, it's for a science project. And lo and behold, on Linus's slide this week was apparently the the chilled trout were now being released back into the reservoir. So that's right, it's the, not just the circle of trout life, but the circle of of the bill, the life of the bills. That's right, we're we're here present tonight. So so it's always nice to see, that was a picture of, right, of the 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 former inhabitants of the trout chillers. And I guess it was a pilot that's now the the purchase that I had asked about, I guess, must be the rest of the systems for the other schools to deploy it for next year. So a little anecdote, the bills aren't all boring. Once in a while, you get something that you think, hmm, what on earth?
You don't know what a trout chill is?
Now I do. Anyway, that's my update.
All right, thank you, Mariah. Next up, curriculum.
We are meeting next Tuesday, May 17th, from four to six. On the agenda is an update on the DESI SEL grant. We'll be getting update, that's will be our second update. We'll also be getting an update on international travel. So those of you who are interested in that topic, it'll be a short update at this time. And we'll also be getting sort of a year-to-date update on the Office of Teaching and Learning goals, which we sort of started out at the beginning of the year. So there's been a lot of progress, so it'll be really exciting. And those are sort of the main topics that will be covered next week. So very exciting.
Any questions for Jennifer? All right. So policy, we normally meet the second Monday of each month. However, this month we postponed because of negotiations. We'll be hearing more on that soon. So we're going to be looking for another date this month to schedule our policy subcommittee meeting. I've had some initial conversations with Helen regarding the sustainability policy that we've been spending a lot of time on. Because there are some capital components to the proposed sustainability draft. Helen indicated that she would like the capital subcommittee to take a look at that as well. So we'll discuss whether we should have a joint meeting or whether it's something that capital will take alone. But more on that soon. That any, it brings us to diversity.
Can I ask you one question? I had sent you that finance policy. Do you think we're gonna dock it that? I thought the, I was hoping we docked it before the end of the fiscal year. What do you think?
I I hope so too. So I'm, I think that we could have a joint finance policy meeting as well. Hopefully we can get that scheduled. I think it's important to get that squared away.
Maybe for like the June meeting, we could do that?
Yes, that's a good idea.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. So now Val with diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice.
So if you looked on the calendar for about a minute, the first meeting was calendered for the 16th of this month. About two hours later, we had a mediation session scheduled for this coming Monday evening. About two hours later, we had a mediation session scheduled for this coming Monday evening. So we're now looking at the 6th of June because town meeting then gets going and it's going to impact our ability to schedule.
All right, thank you Belle. Government relations.
Um, the Senate budget came out and I must admit, I haven't, I don't know what happened with education. Maybe Sam knows more. Did they do better or worse?
Chapter 70 largely remained unchanged, certainly for Brookline, it remained unchanged, $60 minimum per pupil. Circuit breaker, a slight decrease. Regional transportation, a slight increase. The most notable thing that I'm keeping an eye on, and we all should, is the Senate ways and means did not include the roughly $110 million to extend free lunch for all districts. Although at the same time, what was also mentioned is there's a, there's political will to fund it, just it wasn't being funded via the, the operating budget. I think there were, the Senate was feeling there were other ways and other paths to fund that extension. But that would have a big impact to Brookline.
I, I believe that there was an amendment filed on that, Sam, in the Senate for their debate next week. So amendment filing deadline is tomorrow at one. So there have been several amendments and that was one of them that was filed. We'll see where it goes next week, but.
Was there anything else that you noticed in the, because I know that you have, you look at it a lot.
Generally local aid, so not chapter 70, but other local aid was, was stable or up. But otherwise, Sam noted some are a little bit up, some are a little bit down. And I think they'll just get traded in conference committee.
Okay, I think that's it.
All right, thank you Helen. Next up, negotiations. Andy.
I think it can be pretty brief about negotiations since we put out two public statements about those in the last three days. To summarize, we had our second mediation session on Monday. That ended without agreement, but since then we've gotten a written offer sent over by the EES, which we'll be considering momentarily in executive session. And we currently have two more mediation sessions scheduled, one for Saturday night and one for Monday night. That's, that's what we got.
Thank you. Does anyone have a liaison update? Go ahead Jennifer.
I was just going to say that a number of us were at the Brooklyn Asian American Family Network hosted a student essay contest, which was very lovely and there is a recording of it. I know that I received a copy of it because it was, I believe, I don't know if they also posted taping that or if it was a webinar on Zoom. So I know there is a recording of it and happy to send that out. Student essays are always amazing and highly recommended. If you are not able to view it, to see it. Every year, it's, it's always amazing. So highly recommend if you are not able to see it, happy to share that. And I'm sure that any member of the community would like to see it. That's just highly recommended.
We can send it to all of us. We can send it to Rob and
I'll send, I'll send.
Yep, absolutely.
Anyone else have a liaison report? Helen?
So I have a, the Edco Executive Finance Committee met today. I just wanted to let people know that we are well on our way to ending by the end of this year. And the good news is that there may be some repayment of some of the assessments that we gave. They, the budget that was in deficit, they've been able to turn around and, and finish. It's, it's been a complicated year, a very complicated year. But the good news is that we may get some money back in the next fiscal year. So for FY '23.
Are all communities still, are there some community that's still?
No, everybody has paid. Most, there are a few that have some outline, but it's
Continuing
There's nobody who's refusing to pay. It's just that they haven't gotten the, the money. There's a few, maybe five communities haven't gotten some of their money. But everybody is in and, and things have fallen the right way and many, you know, where they, they did estimates and they overestimated. So there's some extra that from the assessments that we had, we're going to get some repayments.
Steven.
The farms and school initiative is having its end of year celebration on May 24th. Sasha and I are going to attend that and we're also working on a job description for sustainability coordinator that, that a donor in the community is interested in supporting.
Sustainability for?
Sustainability in part for supporting food services and waste management, but also it would have a broader mandate than that. Core interests are the, those former two, but the donors apparently wanted to consider something broader.
And there's that over time or just a one time?
It's, I think, a two or three-year consideration.
Andy?
So tomorrow is a monthly meeting of CPAC, the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, will be devoted entirely to a discussion of the special education program review. Casey and possibly other staff. So a lot of people are looking forward to that.
Anyone else have a liaison update? Suzanne?
Yeah, what's that an update given up? Oh, I just wondered if you want to explain, David, how you are going to fill the roles for the committees, subcommittees, what you'd like us to do.
Yes, so normally, so normally, when a new chair comes on board, there's a little bit of a reshuffling in terms of subcommittee assignments and liaisons. The approach that I would like to take, that I plan to do after this meeting is I'm going to contact each one of you and ask you to tell me which subcommittees you'd like to be on, which subcommittees you really don't want to be on, which liaisons you would like to keep or have, which liaisons you don't really want anymore. And then I'm going to try to accommodate those requests best I can. I do not expect there to be any significant reshuffling. So whoever's chairing a subcommittee right now is still going to be chairing that subcommittee.
Is that a threat?
In terms of when, of the timing of when new assignments take place, I would like to onboard Nancy right away so that you can participate as a full member in the subcommittees. And similarly for you Suzanne, so that you can immediately participate in the subcommittees. So that should be taken care of within the next couple of days.
David, given the expansion into a new subcommittee and Mariah and Helen's potential proposal to collapse two committees together, would that decision?
We talked about maybe rolling finance and capital together.
Yeah, you talked about that.
Well, right, exactly. I said, we haven't talked about it, but I could see.
During the, during our summer workshop, or would that happen? Because that's going to have obvious implications for people's heart.
Yes, I think that would be an appropriate conversation for the workshop because a potential merger of two subcommittees would certainly be a stark departure from how business has been conducted previously with subcommittees. So I think that does merit a more thoughtful and clear discussion on how that would work. But in terms of the existing subcommittees, as I was saying, with the exceptions of Nancy and Suzanne and probably myself in negotiations, so I do think it's important for the chair of the school committee to be on negotiations. The new assignments and liaisons probably wouldn't take effect until next fall. So there'll be a few exceptions again for Nancy and Suzanne and for myself, but overall, we'll try to continue with the current groups that we have. There's also consideration of Andy going directly onto finance, which would make sense for the negotiations chair to be on the finance subcommittee. And also we have a vacancy on finance anyway because of the departure of Susan. So some of these will be immediate, some of these will be in the fall. Helen?
So one thing with new members that we've done sometimes, and you know, it's relevant to you guys, what you want to do, but we've given the new member a chance to go to all the, the subcommittee meetings to get a sense of what they are. I mean, you sort of know, you know, curriculum is going to do curriculum, but you know, to sort of sit in on that and see what really sparks your interest. Sometimes something that you thought was, you know, you wanted to be on is not necessarily because, you know, once you've gone to it. That's, that's been something that we've done in the past so that you don't have to choose right away between now and June, have that time to attend the meetings and, and see where, where you really want to spend your time.
Right, certainly nothing would be etched in stone during this interim period because we only have not even two months left.
I'll just go to all.
Are you going to continue to chair policy or you haven't decided yet or?
I think at least for now, I'll continue to chair it so we have some continuity there. Any other questions? All right. That brings us to new business. Do you have any new business?
I just want to throw something out there. I'd like us to come back to is a conversation at some point about food services and wellness committee. To just come back to that at some point. It's not just getting a lot of feedback from students about the food choices. This is a conversation we've had. Those of us who've been on the committee for a number of years, so pre-pandemic, it's a conversation we've had. I think we're coming back to this conversation. The availability, I think some of this has been impacted by the pandemic and what's available, but food choice, what's available, the number of choices, the quality of the food. I think we're coming, I'm hearing a lot of similar things. So
Yeah, the availability of vegetarian options.
That's one of the, the, I'm hearing a lot of common conversations that I felt like came up years ago. So I'd like us to just like be a little proactive. I'm hearing this buzz and like us to talk about it. And I think I'd like to have a conversation about wellness committee.
Where did that live before Jennifer?
There's a, there's supposed to be wellness.
The Wellness Committee met.
Oh, good.
We just met. I was on, I'm on it. And we're meeting again on Monday, the 16th at two o'clock.
Nice, okay, well, beautiful. Is that like under Carlin's leadership or who convenes the Wellness Committee?
Trish, Trish does.
That's also the health curriculum, right? Because that's the piece that I'm hearing feedback on.
Well, right this moment, we're not talking about health, but we just, we just reconvened. So we're, the big thing is this report that has to go out.
Food choices under the health?
No.
Do you know what I mean? Like, where's that live?
The health curriculum under Wellness Committee? I don't think so, is it? I don't know. I'd have to look at that.
Leslie's here.
Food service, is there a food service advisory committee? My understanding is there was or that's maybe dormant because as part of, at your next meeting, hopefully you'll be voting a ratified food services successor agreement. And I've made a commitment that I'm actually careful what I commit to. I've committed to resurrecting based on some of the student input. And hopefully in a post-COVID environment where we have to charge money and people have to make choices of whether they want to pay for lunch. To resurrect the food service advisory committee and get stakeholders to get community buy-in and collect input. I did this once before with great success in a previous, this participation went up dramatically even with the price increase at the same time. And I'm hoping to replicate those results here. That would be for next year is what, what my plans are.
Plus, you know, the wellness issues. Was a loop on whether the health curriculum is under Wellness Committee or is that the elsewhere?
So to be
Or is it homeless right now?
Yeah, so to, so to be honest, I'm not sure, but I would expect that it would fall under curriculum. Because it would be, that would align with how we've been presenting curriculum issues with the curriculum subcommittee.
All right, any other new business? Now seeing none. We're going to entertain a motion to meet an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A for the following purposes. Purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Brooklyn Educators Union, Unit A, Unit B and parent professionals, and with ASME, building service employees and school food service employees. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Purpose six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the body. Maimonides School, Two Clark Road, Brooklyn, Massachusetts. And purpose seven, to review and approve executive session minutes from the April 27th, 2022 meetings. Do we have a motion? The second. And now the votes. Helen?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Nancy?
All right, we will be returning to open session eventually because we do have a possible vote to approve memorandum agreement with ASME.
Gradify, yes. No, you don't.
All right, correction. So we will not be returning to
Situation turned off. Well, if we're not returning to open session, then the Zoom can end, right?
Yeah, so let's do.
We just need to wait for everything to end. Is that right?
Well, let's see if we.